Town Council to order for September 12th. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just, which should be pretty obvious, but Barbara's not here tonight. She's excused from the meeting. All the rest of us are here, so we'll move forward.
At least in body.
And if not in spirit, yeah. I wasn't going to say that, but thank you. By way of announcements, we have upcoming town council meetings on September 26th and October 10th, regular meetings here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Eileen, did you have any other announcements, Dad?
I have no announcements.
Any questions for the announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. Comments from the press and public? If you have comments you'd like to make on our agenda items, please come up and do so at this time. Seeing none, slap right through here. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements tonight. We're saving those for next week. Appointments or public hearings. Legislative updates from state reps.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening, Wendy.
I'm Representative Wendy Thomas. I just wanted to give you an update on the activity that's going on at the State House. It's, we're back in session. A lot of things are happening. I've been placed on a committee to study unprotected drinking water sources. That's being chaired by Senator Chandlee. So that, that committee has just started. Our report isn't due for another year, so we'll be working on that one. We've already met once. I was also placed on the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals. That's the one, that's the commission that's going to study Southern New Hampshire. And it's, it's a big commission. It's a four-year commission. So I was placed on that commission, as was Representative Murphy. This is actually her bill. And then Representative Rung was also placed on that. So we've got three reps from Merrimack on that one. I'm also on a committee that's developing PFAS educational material for the state of New Hampshire. That's not a legal, a legal commission or committee. That's one that's being formed by interested parties. I'm working with them on that. I'm also working, several reps and I are working with the legislators from Massachusetts and Rhode Island because they're having problems with PFAS. In particular, Massachusetts is concerned about, there's a plan to dump a lot of contaminated soil near a water source. And so they're all up in arms about that. So we're working with, right now, Massachusetts and Rhode Island, but our hope is to form some kind of a New England coalition. So we can, we can all sort of share resources and not duplicate behavior. I'm also still working, it's going to be a long time for this one, on the OHRV private property owners' rights up north and in Mink Hills, Minks Hill, the section in down south. I don't even know if you know this. So, so up north, we have Jericho Mountain and we have Ride the Wilds. And there's, there's, there's problems with these, with these, these trails because what they did is instead of keeping it concentrated to just Jericho Mountain, for example, and just this other section, Ride the Wilds, they have something called connectors. So these OHRVs can go on the roads and, and travel from one place to another. Well, one of these connectors is 33 miles long, which is no long, that's not a connector. That's, that's a road. And it, because of the way that it's written and everything, 12-year-olds can ride on, on a public road like that for 33 miles. But the, the real problem is that because it's now on public roads, these, these machines are really, really loud. And so we're hearing from abutting private property owners that in the summertime, they get, they get, on the weekends, they can, and then we have it documented, between 600 and 700 of these ATV, OHRVs, which are even bigger than ATVs, passing right by their, their property. We're hearing that they can't keep their windows open because of the dust situation. We, we're hearing that they can't listen to their televisions in their, in their living rooms because the noise is too loud. One, one gentleman said he couldn't even have a conversation at his breakfast table. So, so somehow, we have to balance the importance of this sport to the state of New Hampshire as far as income up north and private property owners' rights. So that, that's, that's an interesting one.
So Wendy, is that a legislative committee, or?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a Resources and Recreation and Development. It's my committee's subcommittee.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, and I'm the chair of the subcommittee that's looking at this bill. We retained the bill.
Okay.
So it's, it's very complicated, and no matter what we decide, we're going to have one side angry at us.
It's like serving on the zoning board or the planning board.
Yeah.
Going to irritate somebody.
But, you know, I mean, it's becoming a problem because people are, are leaving the towns because it's becoming ridiculous. I mean, they can't live in their houses. And that's what, we don't want abandoned towns, and we don't want towns where people only live there in the summertime. There's no continuity, you know, the school systems are going to struggle. I mean, we, we've got to do something. And now they're trying to develop down south in the Mink Hills. That's what, we, we did a field trip there. And so we have to put a, we have to put constraints on this, otherwise the same thing is going to happen in the South. And we've been called into session on the 18th and 19th to, it's, they're veto days. The governor, as you probably know, last count was 53 bills that he's vetoed, including the budget. As of right now, there's no movement on the budget. The, the first proposal that the governor had submitted to the, the committee that's looking at this was two Thursdays ago. So he's had three months. We gave him three months to, to sort of come to the table, and the first movement was two weeks ago. And it was basically, this was where, last time I was telling you, he's committed to these really deep business taxes. So he doesn't want to budge, budge on those. And by sticking with those deep business taxes, he's removing money from, from fully funding public education. So, so right now, there doesn't seem to be much movement. When we go up on the 18th and 19th, one of the votes may be a continuing resolution, which would give him some more time, but we don't know what's going to happen because we've given him three months. We haven't seen any, any sort of good faith negotiations. So we're not sure what would, what's going to happen. If there's no CR, continuing resolution, then there will, it'll, there'll be no budget. So people will not get paid, and we don't want that either. I mean, so it's going to be interesting. So that's going to happen on the 18th and the 19th of September. I met up with Shannon Barnes from the, from the school board, and she's agreed to have a meeting with the superintendent and her, as well as the reps, to discuss how this budget issue is going to be affecting our public schools. And I asked her directly if she was seeing any impact immediately, and she said, well, it's going to be affecting free lunches, like, very, very soon. So it's, you know, this is, this is not a theoretical thing. This is, this is definitely affecting our town.
Well, it's something, if I might, that I think that the school board could deal with if they chose to. There's other areas they could get, take care of that with, and that's what they'll have to do, and appropriately so, so.
Yeah, well, there's, there's going to have to be a workaround.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is going to, yeah. But it's, it's money that they had anticipated that's no longer there, so. And then, lastly, even though this is sort of related, the last community PFAS discussion that we had with Senator Michael Bennett was really informative. He actually took down notes to bring back to Washington, some action items that, that he's looking at. So I'm going to be following up with him to see if we can, if we can move the needle down in Washington on this.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Peter?
From your hair, and anytime a state rep comes in, and I, and thank you, by the way, I think it's great that everybody's coming in and, and these, these are helpful and kind of filling the, filling the community and what's going on with you guys up there. I'm glad you use it, but bail laws. I gotta tell you, you and your state reps need to start talking about bail laws. I know Shannon Chandlee came in here.
Oh, yes.
And she's on the Judiciary Review Board. I actually sent her an email the other day. It's, it's crazy. I mean, people are coming in and they're getting, they're failing to appear. They're bail jumping. They're getting let it go again. I mean, you've got serious felons
Yeah.
that are getting released. I see this on a daily basis. There's no rhyme nor reason
Yeah.
for some of this. There's got to be something that's got to, you know, they made some changes two years ago, and they got to review that. I know the Chiefs Police Association has kind of brought this up too, but, and anytime I see any of you hard-working folks, I just want to let you know that you got to bring this up and talk about it and ask questions about it because, I'll tell you, it's, until somebody gets hurt by, by someone who's been released, released again, released again, then maybe that'll wake somebody up.
That's a bad time to wake somebody up, though.
Right.
Exactly. Unfortunately, that's why I'm harping on it now when I see you guys.
Yeah, no, and I, I don't disagree with you at all.
And I know that.
And I appreciate you banging the drum because that's, that's how it gets attention. So I know that Nancy's on criminal justice, and so I know that she's, she's heard some bills on this, but I will, I will bring it up as well.
And when I see her, I'll, I'll chew her a little bit too. She's
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's, I, I'm a big believer of banging the drums, so go for it.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
You had a question?
It was more of a comment. I was up in Berlin about a month ago and could not get over the amount of ATVs that are riding around the city of Berlin. It's like the, I mean, I hate to use the term wild, wild west, but it just felt like at, at every intersection that I was at, that the community, the community of Berlin seemed like, you know, the OHRVs were on the more, on the road, on the road more frequently than what I would have expected, especially since, you know, I don't get up to Berlin that often. But what I do know is I know that the towns of Stark and Dummer have done away with OHRV access on the road. So it's, I wanted to communicate to you that it's, it's, it is a conundrum for the North Country because they have invested, states invested a lot of time into Jericho, and I support Jericho. Jericho is a wonderful state park.
Yep.
That multi-use facility, not just for the OHRVs, but for snowmobilers, myself with my sled dogs. I, I've been up there, was up there twice last year training my teams up there because it's the only place where I can go to get snow.
Yeah.
So I, I really appreciate the, the facility up there and the need to connect. So I, I don't envy you right now. I, I really don't because I don't see an, an easy way to get beyond the impasse to come up with something sensible to address private right concerns with promoting economic development, which is solely needed up in that area.
And, and that's the balance
And how you weigh it.
that we're trying to do. One of the problems is the ATV clubs have huge money to pay for lobbyists. So they've got a very, very loud voice at the State House, and the private property owners come in, you know, one at a time, and they, you know, they, they tell us their stories. We're very aware, no one wants to shut down Jericho. No one wants to shut down Ride the Wilds. We just want to contain this so that private property owners can still live peacefully in their home and enjoy their homes, you know? So, yeah, it's going to be tough. It's going to be very tough. And the other thing is ATVs, and I, I had to go to a field trip with my committee to figure this out. I thought ATVs were kind of like fat motorcycles, and that's no longer the case. I mean, they're like Jeeps. They're, they fit four people, and they're, they, you know, they, they have a roof, but the, the sides are open and everything. So, so these are significant machines, and they're going on public roads. They're chewing up the roads. The towns are authorizing use of ATVs without private property owners' permission on Class Six roads. Class Six roads are not maintained by towns. The, the, the property owners have to maintain it. And we heard from some property owners that they're paying up to $10,000 to repair the damage done by these vehicles, and they get no, they don't get reimbursed or anything. So it's a huge, huge problem.
What are the towns?
The towns are saying, you know, it's bringing in income. That's, they're
But they hear from their citizens too, and they're not
Yeah, they're
Yeah, they do.
You know, I mean, up there, you have maybe, you know, four or five citizens on, on a, a long stretch of, of land, you know? Five people versus, you know, 100 that they, they truck in from the ATV clubs. And that's one of the problems too. I mean, somehow, we have to give them a fair voice. So, so this is ongoing. Every time I think we come close to coming to an agreement, something else gets added. It's a really tricky situation, but we've got to get on top of it. Because if we don't, people are going to leave the North Country.
It, it is interesting. It's an area where they beg for prisons because there is nothing for their economy, and, and so
And then that.
I don't know. Sometimes, you know, what you end up getting in the end might not be the best thing in the world, but.
And again, if they, if they kept to the original idea of keeping on Jericho Mountain and Ride the Wilds, nobody would have a problem with that. But it's all of these interconnections that, that are a problem.
Nancy, you had a comment?
Yeah. I don't know how to say this delicately, so I'll do my best.
Okay.
Talk about preempting. I, I don't want to say have a difficult time. That's not the point. When you're talking about the rationale for vetoing and your opinion about what the repercussions are, in my personal opinion, that's biased. Now, I'm not saying you don't have the right to have that opinion, and you may be right, but I think the public needs to hear everything. And unfortunately, and good for you, you're here and other parties that might have a different opinion are not here. So that's their responsibility. But I think I want to be able to, I guess what I would recommend to the public is, yes, take what you're thinking. If in fact you want to know about it, research more. That there's other data as well, I guess
Oh, absolutely.
is what I want to say. And the other thing is, free lunch is a federal program. It's not a state. So I'm not sure what the comment about it will affect free lunch about, because that's a federal program.
It passes through the state, though, doesn't it?
It passes through the state, but the, the numbers and the designation, I believe. No, I may be wrong, but it's, there's a federal, that's where the money comes from.
Well, I'll look into that, because that, that's
So I guess that's my point. Maybe it's the public more than to you, Wendy, is that, and that would be for you or anyone else who comes up before. When they're expressing an opinion about what's going on in Concord, always keep in mind that there are two sides to every debate.
Oh, yeah, no, of course.
And that's all I'm suggesting.
And I would, I would
So it's more to the public more than you.
Right. Well, and, and that's, yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Because the other people have the right to be here, and they're not here.
Well, and I wish that you would invite other people here as well.
Oh, they're, they're invited.
They're always, okay.
So I don't want to take away from my thanking you for being here, because you're right. That's 80% of the battle.
Yeah.
But I think I just want it to be said that people who want to be able to, should do some research as well.
Okay. No, I think that's fine. I agree with that. Everybody should be informed.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Which brings us to the town manager's report.
Okay, this is kind of an announcement, but I'm going to call it a report. So first of all, I just wanted to let you know that you will be getting your August, your August monthly reports from the departments. They will be in your boxes Monday afternoon. And I'm going to try and put them in a better format and put them on the website so that people will be informed about what, the details of what each department's, they've done a really nice job on their reports. So, so moving on, the library is pleased to welcome New York Times bestselling author, novelist, and human rights activist Chris Bojalian to Merrimack on Wednesday, September 25th, as part of the New England Authors Series during Band Books Week. This event will be held at Merrimack High School Little Theater at the high school, and the doors will be open to registered attendees at 6:30. The library's Fall Book Sale, which people really look forward to, will be held on September 21st and Septem, Saturday, September 21st and Sunday, September 22nd, with a Friends members only, Friends of the Library members only, pre-sale on Friday, the 20th. Please visit the library's website. I want to say, I'm not sure that you have all received a copy of the correspondence that we received from Shannon Chandlee, Senator Chandlee, that was in the read file. But I made copies for all of you for it that you can read at your leisure. But I just wanted to let you know, give you kind of the highlights of it. As you know, the town council wrote a letter to the special committee that was talking about the Turnpike and making a very specific request about sound mitigation, barrier, sound barriers, et cetera, in these very specific neighborhoods. And it got voted down at the committee, and so Senator Chan, Chandlee, for our, for us, sent a letter to the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, Commissioner Sheen, asking her if they would please reconsider. And in a two-and-a-half-page letter, she said no to all of it. So she said, "East Ridge condominiums was evaluated for noise impacts. However, the maximum existing noise levels do not exceed the established noise abatement criteria. As such, a barrier will not be constructed at this location. Maple Ridge condominiums already has a noise barrier, and as a result, noise levels at this location do not exceed the established noise abatement criteria. As such, modifications of the existing barrier at this location will not be made. While noise ordinances were identified in the following neighborhoods, Vista Way in parentheses, Ministerial Drive and Roundtree Lane, Harris Ave, Priscilla Lane, east of the Turnpike, north of Exit 12, Back River Road, noise barriers were found not to be reasonable as they exceeded the established effective, effectiveness criteria, which is a federal guideline. As such, a barrier will not be constructed at this location." So thank you to Senator Chandlee, and no thanks to you, Commissioner Sheen. The other thing that I wanted to tell you is that new site plan regulations, which is a complete modernization and comprehensive overhaul of the previous site plans, are moving forward with relevant information. And they were adopted by the Planning Board at the meeting on September 3rd, achieving important, and very important and very time-consuming job by Tim Thompson that is outlined in the implementation goal of the 2013 master plan. Also, on the 3rd of September, the Planning Board meeting, at the Planning Board meeting, conditional approval was granted for an, to an amendment to the previously approved mixed-use site plan for Phase 1 of Merrimack Park Place, which is the development at the base of the, the outlet malls. Project proposing an additional 32 multifamily residential units and removal of 84,200 square feet of office and restaurant space, specialty real, specialty retail and event center from Phase 1 to be included in a sub, in a subsequent phase. The first phase will now be comprised of a 224, of 224 multifamily units, freestanding restaurant, and 120-room Marriott branded hotel. So I, I realize that you, that a business has got to go with whatever the market bears, but that's kind of disappointing to me. It was a very exciting project. It's still is, but we were hoping that it would be kind of a model, like a little model village kind of thing, and it's, it's
Not anymore.
Not anymore. Okay. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, yes.
Comment on Commissioner Sheen's letter from the DOT. It kind of bothers me quite a bit, and I, if anybody from Vista Way, Ministerial Drive, Roundtree, Harris Ave, Priscilla Lane, and Back River Road are watching tonight, you really need to reach out to your, not only your local politicians, but the governor and so forth, because this kind of, it, it strikes me as while there are noise impacts identified in those neighborhoods, noise barriers were found not to be reasonable as they exceeded the established effectiveness criteria. That sounds like, you know, that's bureaucratic BS. So to me, it's like these folks, they're right on top of the highway. It doesn't take an engineer to see that, and they need the assistance. I hope that this isn't, this argument isn't done, and as this project moves forward, that we continue on, especially with our state reps on this. But I just want on the record, and I hope some of these folks are listening, because I, I continue, I'm going to continue to make some noise as much as I can, because I think these folks, once this project's done, are going to bear the brunt of it on their property and the sound and so forth. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank, you know, Senator Chandlee, boy, she's really trying. So I, we should thank her for her continued fighting for us.
The DOT just does whatever they want.
I think what, that, the neighborhood that Peter's talking about, there are two or three trees buffering, you know, the highway from the neighborhood.
Is your mic on?
It is, yep.
Okay.
Closer, sorry about that. I, I suspect that the criteria that they're talking about, there's just too few homes for the cost of the barrier and all that that goes with it, which is unfortunate. It's, it's really difficult for that neighborhood. It's probably the worst of the ones that we alluded to, but.
Yes?
As I, as we had talked about before, Wood Spring Suites, as a result of the, the complaints and the report that we got from the police chief about the clientele guests at their hotels, contacted the police department a few weeks ago and set up a meeting to come here to Merrimack, and they did so today. I went to the police station as well. So the meeting was the chief, deputy chief, and myself. And they sent, they sent four people from the hotel management company, the president, the regional director of operations, the SVP operations, I don't know what that is.
Senior.
Okay. And then they have hired, they actually hired a conserv, a security consultant, and he was there as well. So we were appreciative of the fact that they came. They flew in. I'm not going to tell you the story about the, where did they stay, but, but anyway, so they had some very interesting thoughts that would actually be very productive. And they're looking to institute them right away. I am not a naive person. I don't get the wool pulled over my eyes very easily, and I wait, I will wait to make a judgment to see if, if that will happen. But they seemed genuinely interested in improving this, and they want to be a model of success for the town. So we shall see. I appreciated it, but I, as I said, I appreciated them flying in. The consultant himself came from Tex, from Texas as well. So we'll be, next stop is, seems like a whack-a-mole type of game, but we'll be going over, we'll be going over to the residences who have been at DW Highway, who have been unresponsive. So we're going to try, and I'm not sure if that's wholly owned by an individual. I'm, I'm pretty sure it's not a chain. So we're going to make a concentrated effort to go there as well, because what will happen, of course, is the client, the clientele from one will just move to the next. So as long as they don't move to Merrimack, I'm all right with that. They need to move on out of town. So, and, and what I had said to them, and the chief had said to them, is that the reason that we feel so passionately about our community and what has happened is that we had to hire two extra police officers at a cost of a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year because of the advent of both of these hotels. I can't blame it on the one, but it's the two primarily. I can't blame it on the one, but it's the two primarily. And the taxpayers are picking up the tab for that. We are a safe community. We are a family-oriented community. We have not had a lot of drug problems in the past until they arrived. And what I said to them, and these are statistics that are factual, that of the 189 arrests that the new special investigations unit that was hired for this purpose arrests, 46% of them came from the hotels. And 30% of all arrests in the town come from the hotels, all arrests. So I was beating a dead horse, but I wouldn't stop, because it needs to be said. We are, we, and I said to them, they have the opportunity to reverse something that will actually be effective to bring our town back to where it was, to the best of, at least to the best of their ability. So anyway, it was, I thought it was a productive meeting, but we will hold-
We'll wait and see.
...judgment for, till, till when we actually see some action. Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us know. We kind of, we're all curious about how that went. Just to add to what Nancy was saying.
Peter.
Senator Chan Lee has been very active and helpful, and you'll notice in this packet that Eileen passed out was also an information about the transportation 10-year plan. I sent that out in an email today because she reminded me on a phone call that she had sent it to us, if anybody's interested in proceeding. All of that kind of mixes together, the 10-year plan, the tolls moving south, you know, all of, all of those things are interrelated. And so we do appreciate the work that she's, is doing and hopefully will continue to do. Peter, did you have something you wanted?
I just, I just wanted, in regards to the, Eileen was talking about the hotel, I want to just say thank you for yourself and the chief's efforts, I know, and the staff at the PD that have, that helped kind of coordinate this. And I think that's, that's community policing at one of its best moments, is when you're working together in partnerships. So I think that's excellent. And I also wanted to know if this letter from the Commissioner of the DOT, I'll just hop back on this one second, are we going to post it on our website so that the citizens can read-
We should.
-the response?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to amplify your comments, Councilor Harrington's and Councilor Albert's. I think, and I'll be very brief, I think people in this community know the level of disdain that I have for the Department of Transportation, and it's sad, because I think when we've looked at some of the issues that we've had to interact with the state, whether it be the Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Environmental Services, I would like to think that while we may not always agree with some of the decisions that they've made, I've always felt that they've collaborated with us and they've included us in their decision-making process. My experience, just as Councilor Albert alluded to, she's one big bureaucratic organization. And I'm going to, I, like Peter, I, these neighborhoods need to be fought for with the state as it relates to these sound barriers. And I, and I think we need to keep beating that drum with the DOT until, until they capitulate. And it's going to take, it's, I don't want to say it's going to take an all-hands-on-deck kind of attitude, but that's how I'm looking at it right now. It's, it feels very difficult to work with the folks at the DOT when obviously the issues that we've raised with them, they don't seem, they don't seem to listen to us. They don't seem to listen to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I have one other question, not to, not to drag this on too much. The work on Executive Drive and Amherst Street, at the lights there, is that the, the work to improve the signal interchange, or do we know? Kyle, or Dawn, can you comment on that?
You had to pick another sore spot, Mr. Chairman, didn't you?
Well, I did. Did a good job, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Just to put you on the spot, thanks, Dawn, I appreciate it.
No problem. I had sent out a memo two days ago. The work that's going to be done there is to tie the 12-inch water line to that new development at 4 and 6 Executive Park Drive. The water department had, or MVD, had specified as part of the approval process that they wanted a through loop made through the property. So in order to do that, they need to tie in, it's just past that intersection, and it's before the bridge that we had replaced several years ago. So it's right in that area, but I wanted to make everybody aware, because it is such a heavily traveled area. We've restricted their time so that it's only from 9 until 2, so that the buses can come and go, and we can get the commuter traffic in and out, and they won't be impacting that. As a result of that, it's going to take them two days to probably cross the road and to do their work, but we would not give in to that, any other conditions. We also wanted it done in a timely manner so that the final pavement could be put down, you know, over the patching before winter sets in. So we were also cognitive of that. They were supposed to have done it earlier in the summer, but MVD would not allow them to do that because of the water demand. So now their water demand is a little bit less, so we had to play one of these, and they only have until next Wednesday to have all of this work completed.
Okay. Technically, that wasn't what I thought I was asking, so maybe I can rephrase my question. There's been work done on the traffic lights in that area-
Yes.
-between there and the intersection recently. Is that the work to set the timing on the lights to work better, or is-
I cannot answer that definitively, but I believe yes.
I would hope somebody knows that.
Yes.
In the DPD.
I believe so.
Kyle is nodding his, okay, thank you.
It was also, it was part of the stipulation of that site plan, that work be done on those lights.
Yes. Peter, did you have a question?
Yeah, Dawn, I probably know the answer, but are we going to advertise this work that it's happening between 9 to 5 and, or, excuse me, 9 to 2, and it's going to be delays? Are we going to do like social media, NICSOL, and maybe put out the electronic board tomorrow or something to let everybody know?
I had already contacted the police chief, but I can do that again to make sure if she put it out on the NICSOL. I did, I can put it on the website if I didn't already.
Yeah. Do you think putting the electronic board up there so Friday's return traffic might-
It won't be Fri, it'll be Monday and most unwed-
No, but what I mean is put it up Friday so that people coming home will all say, oh, okay.
It's not our project. It's not a town project, but I felt that it was such an important intersection that I wanted to make sure that people were aware. I can talk to Kyle and Lori and see if we have our message board, one of the message boards could be put up there.
Is that our message board at GW in Bedford?
I don't know that answer, because I, it was asked that question after I had come through that intersection, so I didn't take a look at it at the time.
Yeah, because that, that message is like two weeks old, so.
I'm not sure.
I don't know either.
It's kind of, you keep driving by it thinking, why are they, you know, but I didn't know if that was ours.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Okay.
Commandeer it, that'd be great, yeah. Send the police force out there. Moving right along. Any other questions on the town manager's report? Seeing none. We have nothing for the consent agenda tonight. That brings us to old business. Number one on the old business is the MS4 stormwater report, which means permit.
The point of order, I think, I'm not sure why Mr. Alz is here. Are you here for presentation?
No, I wanted to just make a couple of statements.
But, and then I know the, the captain's here, and they could, I would imagine they might be fairly brief if we were, if we could move them up. Is that, because I think the stormwater might take a little more time.
Oh, might very well.
So, I hope I'm not out of order, but I just thought-
You can always request a change in the order.
That's what I'm doing.
And I don't have a problem with it. If nobody else does, we could, thank you, Dawn, we could move number one on our new business to now. Is that appropriate?
Thank you.
Captain?
Oh, he's disappointed that he's being done so early.
That's right, yes, to go back to work. Or something. So donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department submitted by Captain Matthew Tarleton to the Town Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation for Merrimack resident Patricia Kane, and the amount of $1,000 to the Merrimack Police Department to be used towards the purchase of RAD self-defense training equipment pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15.
Thank you for letting me jump the order here. Might be a first for me, so thank you very much. I'd like to thank town manager, Mr. McCally, members of the Town Council for the opportunity to present this donation. The donation, as you can see, is for $1,000. It's from Patricia Kane. I asked Patricia if she wanted to remain anonymous, she did not, so I feel it was appropriate to make sure that everyone's aware of where the donation came from. She's a recent graduate of the program and was just so overwhelmed and appreciative of what she learned, she wanted to provide any sort of help that she could. And in our particular case, we need equipment. We have some equipment needs, and that's where this donation is going to go toward, equipping students with defensive, defensive gear. So just a little bit about RAD. It started in 1989. I wasn't too familiar with the program until I had a chance to talk with Haley, and it's Haley Galino, she's our ACO. Haley's been a certified RAD instructor since 2003, and she had a chance to talk to the chief, and the chief was all for this, a big proponent of pushing it forward, and that's kind of how things got started with us. Haley got in contact with Amanda Groves, who's one of our patrol officers. Amanda was very much interested in the program as well. So she got certified as an instructor in 2018, and we had our first class in January. We had a second class in April, third class in August, and the last class actually is wrapping up tonight. And it's a 12-hour class. It's broken up into three-hour blocks, so there's four classes total, and they do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They, actually, they're doing it over the John O'Leary Center. It's basic women's defense, self-defense. There's, there's classroom, there's lecture, discussion, and teaching of techniques, in case you define yourself involved in a physical altercation with somebody. Teaches awareness of surrounding, surroundings, potential threats, all that. And we've been getting unbelievable feedback. Like I said, we had the four classes, we had 53 people so far graduate, and the classes run anywhere from like 12 to 14 students, so. Again, this is student gear, very much needed. It's going to help Haley and Mandy get the students through the demonstrations and so forth that much quicker, which will actually probably increase the amount of learning time they're going to have, so they're not swapping out of uniforms, they'll actually have the gear available to them, so get through the class more efficiently, so. So that's pretty much it. If anyone's got any questions for me.
Peter?
Captain, first of all-
Sure.
-thank Pat Kane on behalf of us, and I think maybe this warrants a notice of appreciation from the Town Council as well for her support of this program. And I think this is awesome. I think you guys are doing a great job. I think this is great. One question. You got, does the department intend to offer this program to maybe high school seniors who are getting ready to go off to college, or maybe even high school students in general?
Well, yes, I'm glad, actually, you mentioned that, because Haley, one of the most recent classes that she had was geared toward college students, and she actually filled that class up. So that was, and that was very much well-received. And I know that part of the plan moving forward is, she's actually had some contact with the school system, the high school in particular, proposing that maybe that this be a part of the gym curriculum.
Should be.
And the schools seem to be very much on board with it. And this is basically for women of all ages, as young as 13 with parental consent, and we've had some ladies in the class in their late 60s and early 70s. And great feedback from everybody, so. So that is, that is something that we're doing, and we're going to be moving forward on, so.
Thanks, Cap.
Yeah.
That's great. Is there, is there a charge for the class? Are we, are we charging people to attend this class?
There's no charge.
No charge?
No.
So how are you advertising it?
So basically, we're just getting it out there through social media, and the signup forms are at the police department, so. We're going to eventually get to a point where we're going to have a link on our website to make registration a little bit easier, so you don't need to come in and-
To come in and do the thing.
-apply for the class, but yeah, so.
Okay. And you have, you already have nine suits, and you're looking, you're getting three more, or?
We're looking to get three more suits.
How many do you have now, student suits?
Right now, I think we only have like three, if I recall correctly, so we're, we're low on suits. And we just got the, so we have two aggressor suits as well. And just so you know, we also have two, two of our officers just recently got certified as aggressors, so they basically play the bad guy. So you have Sergeant Dennis Foley is one of them that just went and got certified, and our school resource officer, Derek Hart, just went through the training as well. So those are the really expensive, I want to say they're-
Yeah, those are the much bigger suits.
Yeah, like $1,300. It's quite something. So I, there's a pass out, I gave it to, so to give you an idea that's what the gear looks like. So we're, we're limited on student gear right now, and this donation is really going to help us out with that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Bill?
Thank you. Captain Tarleton, first off, this is awesome. This is a wonderful program that I feel is, I hate to use the word urgently needed, but at least, at least the police department is giving an alternative to, to train women on self-defense and doing it in such a way so that they know the techniques so that they're able to protect themselves. The question I have is with, it's Haley and Amanda that are running the program, or they're the, they're the instructors?
That's correct.
Okay. Are they, are they volunteering their time outside of their normal work schedule to train people and self, to train women in self-defense?
We're working with, we adjust their scheduling so that they can do this training.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. And there's no impact to their, you rearrange your schedule so that there's no impacts to some, the other law enforcement-
That's correct. It doesn't interfere with their normal course of duty, if that's what the question is.
That's what I'm getting at, thank you.
No, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
But to be sure, the, it's during paid hours, Ford is not, because if it's not-
They are getting compensated for it, that's correct. Yeah.
Because without doing that, I think there's potential problems, so I'm glad, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They are getting compensated.
Okay.
Awesome. Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Town Council accept and expend a donation from Merrimack resident Patricia Kane, the amount of $1,000 to the Merrimack Police Department to be used towards the purchase of the RAD self-defense training equipment for two in pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15, and that furthermore, that the Town Council ask the town manager or the chief of police to extend a letter of thanks and appreciation to Ms. Kane for this generous donation, and our sincerest thanks for continuing to empower women in this community.
Sorry. Motion made by Bill and seconded by Peter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? 6-0-0. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Cap.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I did say Barbara was excused at the beginning.
Yeah, yes, you did.
Yes, I did. Okay. Thanks. Just making sure. Did you, were you waiting for public comment, or did you have an agenda item you want to talk about?
I'd like to make some comments, raise a couple of issues, so however that fits into your agenda.
We, we could slip you in right now, real quick, if you want to do that. I don't know if you're interested in listening to the PFAS reports or the stormwater permit report, but.
I'll, I'll read about it later. I appreciate, is this on?
Okay, thank you. Ben Niles, 11 Fernwood Drive. I appreciate you adjusting your schedule in front of me this time to speak, so I can go back and watch the football game.
Just, just-
I've been a resident in town since-
Panthers Buccaneers.
Pardon?
Panthers Buccaneers.
Yeah. I've been a resident in town since 1983. I've seen a lot of wonderful changes, a lot of improvements, huge improvements to our school system, physical plants, and at the same time, I've seen some deterioration of some aspects that affects what I call quality of life. And let me just make a quick comment on the OHRVs. I know it's not our problem to solve in the town of Merrimack, but if they're going to- to restore the quality of life to the residents in the North Country, they only have a couple choices. Require muffler standards with decibel requirements, limit the roads they can access, limit the horsepower of the machines, and maybe the hours of operation. But, you know, that's a sticky wicket. And I was camping up at Lake St., Lake St. Francis back in July, and I saw firsthand the volume of the machines and the noise they make, the dust and mud they throw around. And I can sympathize with the private landowners that are having to maintain Class 6 roads because the roads are not smooth even, and with every rainstorm, you get puddles, and they love to just fly through those puddles, and that just makes the ruts bigger and deeper and requires more repair cost. So it's very unfortunate. The point I'd like to bring or express is my concern is Route 3 traffic congestion. I think, you know, we have a tiger by the tail, and when you look at the amount of apartments and hotel rooms that we've built and are still continuing to build along the Route 3 corridor in town, the traffic in, southbound in the morning, I believe it is, and northbound in the evening is just intolerable. It literally backs up for miles. And I alter my routine now so that I avoid that whole stretch of highway during those time periods. But the people that have to travel them, I feel sorry, because the cars literally inch and crawl, stop and go, stop and go, and it's just a horrible situation. What I would suggest or ask that the town do, and it starts with the Town Council, our legislative body, is I think we need to commission a traffic study that we pay for, that we own. It's our study. I don't think we rely on the state. You've heard some earlier comments on the Department of Transportation and how, you know, they have a mind of their own. I don't think they have a strong interest in resolving our problems or issues. We've got to take the bull by the horn ourselves and deal with it ourselves. It's affecting the quality of life, and quite frankly, it's going to affect the residents and eventually property values in this town, because it's spilling over into the feeder roads, whether it's Amherst Road, Wire Road, Wallace Road, et cetera. And it's just continued to get worse. And when you look at it as bad as it is now, and we're adding probably another 500 units between, by the YMCA, the Burger King, and up north by the, across from St. James School, and behind the fire station, it's only going to get worse, I think more than people envisioned. And it brings to a couple of questions, you know, do we need a building moratorium in town pending the outcome of a study? There's a responsibility in our government, I believe, to maintain a reasonable quality of life for our residents in the town. The residents look to our government, our town government, to do that. And we need to cross that bridge as difficult as it may seem. And then I come to the question, who's responsible for town-wide housing policy programs, regulations? Density. Density is an issue because of, the higher the density, the more the traffic, which falls to Route 3. Lack of density is an issue because there's no affordable housing in town. Seniors that want to downsize have nowhere to go other than to leave town, because the stuff being built costs 50% more than what their house would sell for. And it's too big. Downsized, not upsized. The housing being built in the subdivisions is being upsized. So if you have an 1,800, 2,100 square foot house, they're building 3,000, 4,000 square foot houses. This is crazy. Doesn't make sense. And as I sit in a house, a four-bedroom house with three empty bedrooms, there's three empty bedrooms that could be used by a family and children that ain't going to be used because I got nowhere to go. And I talk to my friends that are my age, retired, and they're in the same boat. We're not wealthy. We can't just, you know, sell our house in Massachusetts for a million dollars and move up here. We're not part of that demographic shift. So we're stuck. We're frozen in place. Now, the key is, if you want to lower the price of housing, the first most significant impact is density. Build a nice neighborhood of townhouses, or semi-detached row homes. Learn from the cities of old, what they did works on it. And there's nothing wrong with those kind of neighborhoods. Senior housing, you know, there is nothing being built that I'm aware of. There's one, there's a couple existing places, but I see nothing new coming on for, you know, 55-plus housing on it, you know? And you go to the websites, and they say senior housing, they're showing you condos. They're not 55-plus communities geared to the needs of seniors with the layout, the appliance arrangement, the cabinetry, and the doorway width for aging seniors. They're just condos, built, you know, in the 80s and 90s. That's not senior housing. So we're really missing the boat in not providing in our town growth for our seniors. So they're aged in place until they're off to an apartment somewhere or a nursing home. That's not what I call quality of life. And the same thing with young folks, starter homes. You know, I read about the complaint from the builders and developers, and they talk about high regulation, the amount of regulation, the cost of it. And I realize, I believe, we don't have impact fees where a lot of towns do. So that's a step in the right direction. But when you look at, you know, the various building codes and et cetera, that, that can have an impact. And, you know, maybe it's time we, you know, collaborate with the New Hampshire Builders' Association and ask them what they would recommend we do to lower the cost of housing, new housing in our town. And particularly, you know, when you look at workers, they can't buy housing in our town. It's too expensive for them. What's wrong with a small two- or three-bedroom home? They're not planning on big families. The millennials all want anywhere from zero to one, maybe two kids max. They don't need four-bedroom houses. And again, if you have cluster housing, you drive down the land costs, instead of being 125, 150,000 per unit for the land, you can chop that in half or two-thirds. That does wonders for affordable housing, assuming the builders are willing to do that and pass the savings to the consumer. If not, then you don't approve their proposal, you know? But it's almost like we have a contest to reward the builders that are willing to partner with us to build affordable housing that addresses the needs of the millennial generation that wants to work in our town and nearby towns and live here, too. We have a good school system. I was very, you know, happy with the way my children went through the school system. Wasn't perfect, but it's a good school system. They got a good education on it. And, you know, we need to find ways to keep more of the young folks in our town and for them to buy into our town, plant their roots in our town, not be a renter, so to speak. So I think we have some, some needs that we should be working on, and if we're not, we need to form some study groups or study commissions, reach out to interested town folks to join some of Town Council and Town Administrative officials to start this analysis in collaboration. I spent my whole career in housing finance. I understand housing. I understand financing it on it. It's not that difficult, but it requires some give and take by all the parties on it. So that's, that's my suggestion, and I really think we need, you know, to me, you know, the whole aspect of affordable housing, that's, that's kind of a long-term, you know, that's on my wish list, that's not today. It's, you know, any fruits of the labor would be probably a year or two away. But I think what's most urgent is a comprehensive traffic study for the Route 3 corridor with current traffic counts, not what the state's doing using 10-year-old traffic counts. Shame on them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So thank you for listening to me, and I would be happy to participate in some of the work on some of these things. I'm retired, so I have the time. I recently joined the zoning board of adjustment, and I'm starting to learn and feel my way there. So I'd like to spend some of my free time helping make Merrimack a better town.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. Okay. Back on track with our agenda. So now we'll go forward with the MS4 stormwater permit. Unless you get halfway up here and we change our mind again?
Yes.
But I got to get you started before I can do that. Overruled. It looks like it's glowing, so may just need to warm up. Have a green light also. There you go. This is who?
He's the new Chris.
The new Chris.
We're very glad to have him.
Welcome, thanks.
Does he do makeup or hair?
Oh, good.
I'm doing my best to make you all look great, so don't worry.
Well, we appreciate that. Can you add hair to that side?
Colin, feel free to wave at me if I don't turn my mic on.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're going to see...
Is your mic on?
It is on.
Oh, okay.
I see the light. You're going to be seeing a lot of me in the next couple of months.
Oh, well, good.
There you have it.
Get Colin to do makeup. No, I'm just kidding.
Thanks.
Not intended to be a slam at all.
Okay. All right. So, I've been asked to do a little presentation, so I'm going to go back in time, do a little bit of history, and then bring you up to date with what's been going on, because I know some of you have not had some of this history, so anyway. New Hampshire communities affected by the MS4. The EPA is the one that has been driving this permit. The way they determine what towns were within the MS4 was what they called...
Just before you get too far away, you're talking about the MS4, and since we're going back in history, can you, just for people that are watching, can you tell us what MS4 stands for?
Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So it's an M with four S's, so hence MS4. The government likes to use lots of acronyms.
They do.
Lately, I have been living and breathing MS4, so, yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I, you're right, I should have... So anyway, they determined the urbanized areas from the 2000 and 2010 census. And by the way, we will be having a 2020 census, so who knows what's going to happen then? But anyway, the urbanized area is basically, to make it simple, having 1,000 people within one square mile. And basically, in this town, it encompasses most, most of the town. Under these regulations, and the urbanized is actually spread out from Boston, so it's the Boston urbanized area. We have 60 regulated communities in New Hampshire, of which 16 of them were allowed to get waivers because of their size and because they didn't meet the 1,000 people within a square mile. So they, they were actually granted a waiver. Plus, in New Hampshire, we have three what they call non-traditionals, which would be UNH, DOT, and the Veterans Center. So those would be the three. So this brings our total towns and communities in New Hampshire to 47 that are regulated. These are the communities that were waived, so Barrington, Bow, Brentwood, Candia, the very, the smaller towns. So they were given a waiver by EPA because they fit within the criteria of the waiver. This is just a quick graphic of the area that is encompassed by the EPA. So it's the southeast section, southeast, the southern section of New Hampshire, basically. That's all that shows. So if we take a look at our area, we have set up different coalitions through the years. And the brownish color or orange color, that is the seacoast one. The light yellows are the areas where they were granted the waivers, so Bow, Candia, Chester, Fremont, Brentwood, the smaller communities. The two greens were the, the top one was the Manchester Stormwater Coalition, and the south one was the Nashua Coalition. When the new permit came out, and we started that permit July 1, 2018, when that permit came out, the two coalitions, Manchester and Nashua, we decided to join forces, because a lot of us were going to both of them, and we were covering the same area. We needed more people. So what we did is we joined, and unfortunately, a couple of months ago, I was asked to run the Nashua portion of the Stormwater Coalition. And I stated, the only way I'm going to run this is if we change the name, because we're no longer just Manchester and Nashua. We have been together for two years, working hard on this permit. And what we do, what we drain to is the Merrimack River. All of the towns, and if you looked back, oops, I'm going forward the other way. oops, I'm going forward the other way. Oops, sorry. We'll go backwards this way. If you look at this, towns out Wilton, Milford, Amherst, they drain into the South Heagan, which also drains into the Merrimack. So everybody within our area at some point drains into the Merrimack River. So what I got them to do was we voted on a name last month to New Hampshire, Lower Merrimack Valley Stormwater Coalition. It's long, it's arduous, but at least it reflects our area and what we are actually trying to protect. It's the same thing with the seacoast. The seacoast had several different communities, coalitions, and they all joined forces and became the seacoast versus just the Great Bay and the, so, anyway. There's fifteen communities that are members of the coalition in the seacoast. We have eighteen communities here. We're also being helped, both of our coalition groups, by DES. They're involved in both of our coalition groups. They attend all of our coalition meetings and our sub-meetings, subcommittee meetings. They keep our minutes, they keep a blog so that we can share things between each other, and they have been creating templates for us. The communities that are within our coalition group are Amherst, Bedford, Derry, Gostown, Hollis, Hudson, Litchfield, London, Derry, Manchester, Merrimack, Milford, Nashua, Palom, Salem, Wilton, and Windham. We also have Laconia. Now, Laconia is not obviously in the southern, southeastern New Hampshire, but they are trying to be proactive, because they know at some point it's probably going to come to them, and they've apparently been having some issues, so they have been joining our group. So we have eighteen that have been there fairly consistently, some of them coming a little less than others, but we've all been contributing to this, which has helped immensely, because I cannot do all of the work that is required under this permit. I just can't. But when we all work together and we all do little bits and we bring it together, we have been able to get through the first year. Together. We are now getting ready to do our second year. In two weeks, I have to do a report to the EPA on our whole first year's activities. So for the next two weeks, you won't see me, because I am going to be consumed by-
When you say "our," are you talking about our-
Our town.
Town.
Every, everybody has to do-
Has to do their own.
Annual report. We have made several templates, and we, we're gonna use the template that best fits our community. So in doing the template, some of those items have been filled out for us. So it's a little bit easier, it's not quite so arduous, but it's still, these are not simple forms to fill out. And if you check any box, you better make sure that you're a hundred percent, believe me. So anyway, our first year, the first thing I did was to create an NOI, which is a notice of intent, which I did for last October first. And I did that, and we got, received our letter, not a couple months later, but we received it in May this year. So we have been approved. We had no changes to our NOI that I had prepared from last year. And again, we had worked collectively on the NOI to be able to fill that out. So we all submitted something that was very similar, but yet we tweaked it to fit our communities. So this past year, we've been working on the Stormwater Management Program. Now, that sounds fairly simple. We've only had one task. Huh. So within this, you will find many different parts to this. So this document is what we're going to use to describe our activities and to do the measures for how we're going to implement and to meet the terms of this permit. We can change it, we can update it, we can modify it, however we need to, and whatever we feel we can meet and be able to achieve. We have to comply with the schedules we've set forth, but our NOI is going to be our document that we're heading towards, because that has our schedules. So that's what we're heading towards. We also had to create as part of this what's called minimum control measures, or the MCMS. So again, another acronym, but that's what we, that's what they're called. We have six MCMS. So public education, public involvement, the IDDE, illicit discharge detection and elimination program, very large, to go along with the name. Construction site, stormwater runoff, post-construction, and number six is good housekeeping and pollution prevention for the permiti-owned operations. Everything we own. Not a small task. So, MCM1, just to clarify, these, these are public education and outreach, targeting four audiences. We have to do two pamphlets for every, for each one of these four different target areas, and we have to do two within a five-year period. So we've got residences and homeowners, we've got commercial and business properties, developers, construction and reconstruction, and industrial properties. The very first task I had my interns do this summer was to create these documents. So they just got out in, in May and into June, and you'll see there's several of them in your packets. Actually, DES created the templates for these pamphlets. We would take the templates from the blog, and we would create our own educational. So we do our own spin on them to adapt it to what we have. We have done ours out in distribution since May. It was a little bit later than some, but earlier than some others, but it was the best I could do. And I still have to put them on the website, and I will do that. So the first one, it's in your packet, it's just what it roughly looks like. I poop, you scoop. So, these will make, there's different guidelines within there, where you can do small changes as you're walking your dog and be able to help the environment and to be able to help us to comply with the MS4. So I gave these up to the town clerk, so every time they go to do a dog registration, they are now handing these out. Unfortunately, it came towards the end of the registration period, and since that time, I have rerun more pamphlets for her, and I've included the town code within those because I had not put the town code in originally. So I've already made an adjustment to these. But anyway, I've got, I've got those, they're out there. Also, any events we've gone to, I've passed out packets of all of these.
Do you have them at the dog park as well?
I was just gonna ask.
Actually, conservation, a few weeks ago, conservation asked me about this, and what I did was I laminated those front and back, and they've posted them at all their trailheads, and I don't know if they did the dock, dog park or not, but I can check on that. I didn't think of that one.
Isn't there an Eagle Scout that's putting up a thing?
There was a kiosk or something.
A kiosk, so that would be perfect.
So I did fifteen sets for the Conservation Commission. So that's also another place where they've gone out. Thank you for, the other one we did was nitrogen for, so fertilizer on your grass. We put that out this summer. They're also all at the town hall here. I don't know if there's any more left upstairs, but I've got them downstairs. Again, there's different recommendations that come within there, you know, choose the right grass seed, choose the right fertilizer, all of that. And it's, again, it's in your packet. The one for this fall is rake it or leave it. So what we don't want to have happen is to put your leaves or your grass clippings within a wetland area, within a drainage ditch. It blocks the ditches, and it creates pollution, basically, if you do it that way. If you put it in your compost, you can use it. You can use it in your garden next year. It will decompose, and it's a better place to put it. So this pamphlet actually goes through and tells you what to do with it. So it's your choice. Your leaves, your grass clippings, they're a valuable resource to you. The less you have to buy a fertilizer if you use these and compost them.
The only other thing that suggests is the schools. They have environmental science classes.
Okay.
Getting some copies of all of these things to the schools.
Thank you. I'm looking for places to put them out.
No, I understand. I mean, I think they're terrific. You're right. I did see them, and that's what I thought of it. This would be good for kids, even the elementary schools would be good for that.
Certainly, I can certainly ask. One that is not in your packet, we started out with the EPA version, and the state had created, DES had actually created and made the pamphlets, and when I brought them back to our wastewater, they did not like them. They didn't think they were appropriate. So what we did is we created our own, and that's fine. I took out what they didn't like, and I replaced it with these trucks, because they felt it was more appropriate. So what happens here is these go to wastewater. Every time a hauler comes in, they take some of these to be able to pass out to the homeowners that have septic systems, because this doesn't need to go out to every, every person in town, because a lot of people are on town sewer. So this is just through them. So that's the way we're getting them out, these out for them. Enough of that. Public involvement, like I said, you'll be seeing a very lot of me in the next couple of months, because I need to come through and change some of the town codes. I need to go to planning board and go through some regulations. So we're gonna be having a lot of public hearings and comments, and that's where the public can be involved within our different plans. And plus, I will be putting them all onto the website. I'm, I'm gonna put them on, even though they're in draft for now, so that they can be able to have some comments. And then, we have a lot of different departments and a lot of different people in this town that have input on these, so it's taking me a while to go through all of the different people that have vested interests in this, so. All right, MCM3, is it illicit discharge detection and elimination program? This is a biggie. It is not just sewer lines connecting to storm drain lines. There's a lot to this. I'm going to have to change code 167 significantly. I've got a draft that I've been worked on, and I had the interns working on earlier in the summer. I have to include the IDDE within that code, and it has to give authority to different people for being able to detect these and to be able to help eliminate them, basically. It's a stormwater. Yes, it is. But it's going to have to be totally rewritten, which I've got in, yes. So it, within that's gonna have to have definitions, provisions, how to eliminate them, non-stormwater discharges, so what you cannot, what we cannot. There are certain things we cannot accept in our drainage system, no matter what the EPA has outlined. We shall not accept these.
Can you give an example?
Floor drains. It's a biggie. I cannot accept anything from a floor drain, because somebody could be working on a car within, if a garage, or even a parking garage. Some of these new developments, they want a parking garage, they want a footing drain. I cannot accept that. So what happens is they have to put it to their own detention, their own whatever basin, however they want to take care of it, and have their own NPDES permit. I cannot take it.
What about pre-existing ones?
That's gonna be a problem, so we'll have to-
That's an illicit discharge.
And you gotta find them.
We've gotta find them, yes.
Restaurants and all that, right?
Well, we are in actually very good shape, because our drainage system and our sewer system have, for the most part, been separated. Years gone by, so we've found most of those type things. So what we have is a lot of septic systems. In fact, I did have one this summer, and it actually, we turned it over to DES, so they're dealing with it.
Which is a failed septic system, you mean, or?
Yes. We, we believe so, but DES had been involved, so we got them back involved, because it was beyond, so.
And they were hooked into the stormwater system?
No. No, it was, it was on the surface, so that was, it was a different, yeah, little different. Sanitary sewer overflows, we don't have them, because we don't have the-
Finish your thought, Dawn. Just had a question, that's all.
The sanitary sewer overflows are dealt with by wastewater. So since they deal with them, and they're very, we don't usually have them, it's only on a very high rain event and whatever. I have a waiver in our permit, so we don't have to even address those. And we don't have any of the CSOs, which are the combined sewers, which like Manchester and Nashua, they have a lot of that. We have almost nothing. So.
Dawn, I'm just curious, when the illicit, the illicit dumping or whatever, has the, have you guys taken a lot of complaints about people doing things such as, you know, pouring oil down the gutters and stuff like that?
Occasionally, we've gotten those, and I believe, right now, the building officials take care of that, and they contact DES and-
Thank you.
But that is something we have to make sure that is within our code to officially deal with.
Yeah, I'd like to think that most people know to do the right thing, but I'm sure there are people that like to cut corners.
And there will be flyers coming in coming years?
I just wanna tell you kind of a little humorous, terrible anecdote. We got a call from someone telling us that there were contractors over painting, doing some painting work over at the Harris Pond Shopping Center there, and when they saw that people, the workers, when they, and they dumped the paint down the, down the sewer grate, or the stormwater? Stormwater sewer? So anyway, so when they, they saw that people had, had figured that out, they went back and painted the grate. So the grate was, was normally black. They poured paint in it. It was now white, and so before, somebody had taken a picture of it when it was white, but they went back and they painted it black, so that we wouldn't know that they had dumped-
White paint.
White paint in there.
So Eileen, what, were they, was there some type of fine or punishment or anything levied on this company?
I think DES got, might have gotten involved.
Yeah, I think DES got involved, yeah.
But yes, they, they're responsible for all the cleanup.
Yes.
Yeah, that raises, that raises a real question in my mind. When I read this through earlier, Dawn, and I thank you for your good work, I recognized this illicit discharge detection was something to be paying attention to. But what is the enforcement or, you know, when you find an illegal floor drain, and I'm aware that they've been, like, very few, but I, you know, who enforces what you're going to have to, you know, present to the EPA? It's up to us?
It's up to us to determine who we want to have it doing it. In the past, I believe, it depends who it connects to, too. So if it connects to the sewer line, then our sewer department goes out and, and tells them they can't do that, and it's up to the owner to block it. If not, then we have to take action and then levy against them. So those are parts of it. There's stormwater mapping, phase one and two.
If you don't mind, Dawn, I'll jump in on that one a little bit. Is this on?
Probably, but you can pull it up, too.
Is that better?
Yes.
So, these are great questions, and, and control measure three is, is one of the most difficult ones. As you guys know, the stormwater program started for the town in 2003 with the first permit. The, the IDDE program has been part of the permit since then. When we created the stormwater standards, uh, this was definitely a roadblock we, we ran against. And we, we never did make a, a final draft of, of the IDDE portion of it because of these complications. Um, it's not just who we want to, to dictate who, who controls it. It's also governed by the RSAs of what the state allows the town to do. Uh, currently, outside of, um, the wastewater folks, Public Works has no enforcement capabilities whatsoever. Uh, so when we have a, an IDDE thing, like the one Eileen mentioned before. Uh, we get involved from an investigation standpoint and work with other departments. Um, right now, um, of course, the police have enforcement capabilities, the building inspector has enforcement capabilities, the health officer. Um, and, and the planning and zoning administrator, those are really the big, big enforcement components that the town has. And somehow, we'll have to craft these rules and, and most likely get our town attorney involved. Cause it, it is, it's very complicated on how to get it right, how to set fines. Um, as Dawn mentioned, it varies whether it's a private system or a public system. If it's a private system, it doesn't affect our MS four, uh, but it certainly affects, um.
Our community.
You know, it, it's still part of the IDDE program because that's a town code, not an MS four code. Uh, so there, there's a whole lot to this and, um, Dawn's been doing a lot of great work. And, and there's still a ton of work to do and, so there, there's gonna be a lot of discussion and there'll probably be a lot of angst. And, and trouble working through it, but, but we'll get there.
Thank you, Kyle.
This is also, um, one of the control measures that. I can't do alone, I cannot do this, I do not have the time. So between doing the mapping, which was on the previous page, this continues, by the way, the outfall inventory and interconnections. We have to do an initial ranking, which I already did. Um, but it has to be modified and we have to do more work, a lot more work on that. We started dry weather outfall, I had the interns this summer out doing dry well, so dry weather outfall. So we had to actually create the forms to be able to go and sample. Because we have to make sure that the chain of cust- custody for all of the testing is done properly. It all has to be documented and it has to be in the right order and sequence. We had a tablet this year which we purchased, um, which they can go out and they found the outlets. And they relocated them, making sure they're correct. Our next step is to get our paper form put in there. So that we can then just be able to take it and to put it into our GIS system and asset management. Or some other type of program where I can then have one complete list without having to compile them separate. Cause right now, I'm hav- having to do it, I pulled out eighty-eight outfalls this year. And I targeted those because they were draining directly to some of our impaired waters. So I pulled those out, they went out, our dry wat- weather sampling is done at certain times. And fro- out of the eighty-eight, I only had six or eight that were actually flowing and, and that's fine. So that was good, I didn't have to do the testing on all of them because if there's no water, I don't test, we document, we go. Um, so there's about six to eight, I do not have the next part of the component. I set it up this year, it's not due until this coming year, but I set it up so that I could find out all of the road bumps. Cause we never had this program, so I wanted to find out where our problem issues are gonna be. So that's what we've been working on, that's what I sent the interns out. I always send them out in twos, in the beginning, I sent all five of them out. And I know I had comments from a few neighbors, you know, you got five people standing there, well. I needed them to learn and understand so they were all doing this process exactly the same, it has to be the same. So I was very fortunate in that Sarita at wastewater, when they went out to do their sampling, they took them out with them. To train them the clean water sampling method so that they knew and could become certified to the way to do it. I have never done it, I, I don't have time, I just don't. So I was very fortunate and, and I'm blessed to have her have helped us. And to be able to do some of the lab work for us there, which saved us some money, some of the things she can't do. And we did have to send out, which was a good piece of money, but, um, you know, it was only six or eight for this year. But when we get into the wet weather.
How many fouls do we have?
Over five hundred outfalls, we have over five thousand catch basins, it's significant.
So you have to test eventually, which outfall?
Possibly, it will, yeah, at some point, yeah. But I tried to break it down into the most important ones for this year and then we'll go from there.
Set up the system so exactly, you know, the system will be in place.
Exactly, exactly, and if we find one with a problem, then we'll be able to move upstream from that. But, um, you know, we didn't find anything of great significance, um, through any of these for this year. And like I said, we were just setting it up and I'm not at a point where I can put them all together and to do a comprehensive. Um, analysis of it, which I will need to do, we, so we need to do follow-up rankings. Uh, catchmais- catchment investigation, so every outfall has a certain area that it is taking and draining. We have to define all of those and we have to do employee training. MCM four, this we are actually have in place, but we need to basically update it for the new regulations. Um, I worked with Tim in doing the site plan. So I incorporated what was needed within the site plan at the same time. I have to do another set of regulations on top of that for stormwater, for erosion control. And for the IDDE, so the IDDE and stormwater will have not only chapter one sixty-seven. But they'll also have their own regulations to go with it, this is huge, these are huge. Um, and again, I have templates that we've been working with and creating them for the town of Merrimack. You know, we've taken them, we've worked with all of the different coalition towns and we've put them together and, so now we just. The interns, one of the things they did this summer was to make them into Merrimack friendly, so. Anyway, that's, oh, mm-hmm, that's what I've been doing, so, living my life. Um, MCM five is the post-construction, we have some of this set up. We've been very diligent, um, you know, Kyle was back from two thousand and three in setting a lot of this up. Our words may not be exactly the same, but our results are what they're looking for. So we have stormwater management right now of anything over twenty thousand square feet, that's fairly small. So we have reporting from a third party that needs to report weekly and after a quarter inch of rain. Um, which they do, a lot of towns never even had that set up at all, so we've al- we're already ahead of the eight ball and a lot of that. Um. Like I said, I've been living and breathing this and I have, what, seventeen other duties that I'm supposed to be doing besides this? So I'm, I'm a little stressed, but anyway.
Don't leave us.
The other part of this is to have operations and maintenance plans. So every development is supposed to have an operation and maintenance plans, we've always required them. We have a little bit more work to do on them to make sure that they report back to us. So this would be a bigger site plan, an industrial place where they need to report back. Are all of their detention basins working, are their swales working? Once or twice a year, whatever their requirements are, they need to report back to the town. Um, and a lot of them have not been doing that at this point. So we need to set up a better comprehensive program in order to be able to do that, um, but our pieces are there. Our, so we're in good shape. MCM six is another big one and it has to do a lot with our facilities. So we have to take an inventory of our parks and open spaces, we have to find out what do we do for pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers? Set up plans for all of those, um, all of our buildings and facilities, our school, town offices, police, fire stations, pools, highway. We have to find out, is there any materials on, that are stored on site that could be hazardous? We have to know all of this and we have to be able to have plans for all of this. Our vehicles and equipment, where do we store them, where do we keep them, what, how do we deal with spills, what do we do with the wash water? Um, these are all plans or part of the overall plan for the good housekeeping that we have to come up with. Second part of this, infrastructure operations and maintenance, our street sweeping, our catch basins, our winter maintenance. We do all of this already, but we have to have more documentation and we have to have quantities. And be able to prove in the future that we are doing it in such a manner that we're actually reducing. So, and we do the green snow pro, which helps, um, and all of our highway guys are trained on that. There is an issue with the legislature with that, but they're working through that to get towns certified. And I've been pushing at that because our people wanted to go to these classes and to get their certificate. Well, the state determined that we couldn't get our certificate because we're a municipality. So they're trying to work that in and be still able to be certified. And we can put that onto our, um, MS four plan that we are, you know, green snow pro, pro-certified. The other thing we have to do is stormwater.
Is, the green snow pro, is that the, uh, system that is in all the trucks for dispatch and solve now?
Yes.
Do all of our vehicles now have that?
I believe so, yes.
Thanks.
Stormwater pollution prevention plan, um, this would be for our facilities, for like our highway garage. Um, spill avoidance, evaluations, record keeping, so this is another. Uh, another person, basically. I can't do this, I just don't have the hours. You have no idea how many hours I have put into this this year, I live and breathe stormwater.
Eileen?
As you know, we've discussed this for some time, um, the council's already been apprised of this whole thing. You've given presentations before and they understand that there, there will need to be more staff. Um, to accomplish these things, so I just wanna assure you that we're right on top of it and help is on the way.
I think.
Thank you.
Even from the very beginning, you're absolutely right, before we knew the intricacies of it. That was made well-known to all of us, so, rest assured, we hear you.
Thank you, um, so the MCM three is basically the environmental. And it became very apparent this year, um, we also needed GIS, somebody with some GIS knowledge. To be able to change our GIS system, to be able to put all of our information in and to be able to deal with it. I can do that, I've had some of the training, I don't have time to do that. Um, so again, these would be some of the duties that we would be looking at and it's basically under the MCM three. Um, different types of things. This is a forty-hour week position, the next position is basically, um, about seventy percent. Or seventy-five, so this would be more of a highway-type person, um, I put highway slash stormwater foreman. So seventy percent of the time would need to be spent doing MS four-type stuff. And then the rest of the time could be spent doing normal highway duties, so it'd still be a full-time person. Um, and this would be under the MCM six, basically taking care of the catch basins, making sure all the records are ac- accurate. Highway also got a tablet this year and when they were doing their cleaning of their catch basins. They actually have the form right in their tablet, so they were able to fill it out right in the tablet. And then all of that information unfortunately is sitting there waiting. At, for us to be able to pull it and to extract all the information, but there's gonna be information in there that I'm going to need. To be able to fill out the annual reports every year. Um, and again, in compliance with the, uh, winters road maintenance, the green snow pro. Training the employees and keeping up with the SWPs for the town-owned facilities. There's a lot to this, it's a lot. I had done a real rough, uh, projected cost, what I had in your earlier packet, this has changed a little. Your earlier packet had, um, only one employee, I then since have had the second employee on this. Um, so the numbers changed, but the bottom line, this anticipate the savings at about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Over the, yes.
And that's, that's savings above and beyond our, savings as opposed to hiring an outside contractor to do the job for us?
Right, that's the comparison.
Basically, taking out their profit.
Yeah. So.
Eileen?
So, we very, very much appreciate everything that you're doing on this. Um, I am very upset the fact that the Department of Environmental Services. Is not, um, taking care of this like every other state, almost every other state in the nation. Uh, New Hampshire is one of the only ones that has had this imposed upon them. And because it was imposed upon us and not, didn't go to the state of New Hampshire. We got hit by the EPA rules. So the EPA rules are, let's get every drop of crystal clear rainwater that we possibly can. And you can see how onerous, uh, these particular things are. And again, we're very lucky to have Dawn here to, uh, take care of this for us. Um, I still believe that the state of New Hampshire should be do- should be doing this. Um, each of us as municipalities fortu- we're fortunate to have professional staff. Um, there, the smaller communities are, are, um, very, uh, fortunate. To be able to belong to a coalition, whereby they can, uh, you know, enjoy the, the help from other communities. But I can't imagine, can you go back again, please? Um, I can't imagine how some of these very small communities could actually do these things. Um, on their own, so, um, you can see if we were to, to, um, hire a contractor. Over the next five years, this is gonna cost us one million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And maybe it may give us some results, maybe it may give us cleaner water. Um, but it's so over the top with all the regulations and all of the recording. And all of the sampling, um, because it's coming from a federal source rather than our own state source. Um, that it's, it's, uh, it's really mind-boggling. Uh, so at the best, we would, we would be able to spend only one million, fifty-six thousand dollars. Over the next four years and this goes on forever. Um, it'll even out at some point, but not by much, it's not, it doesn't end for, in, in four years. So.
It's the establishment of it.
The, this, yes, then it's constant, so, um, what I would say is, I, I have two questions first. Um, where is DES on this, I know that it was, it, it went before the, the, um, budgetary committees. And all that kinda thing to propose that DES take over this role. And I'm not sure where that went, but it seemed to just, uh, disappear into the ether. Um, and secondly, I don't understand why, um, with all the legal eagles. That were used down in Washington to try and get some relief from this, we made no progress whatsoever. So my first question is DES, my second question is, di- does, um, have we exhausted all our legal avenues? For some reasonableness in our, um, in our approach to this permit?
Dawn.
Kyle went before the legislature. I went two or three times. You, Bill, you went.
Yep.
Um, the last time I went, I went before the financial committee and they wouldn't even hear us and they threw us out. They did not supply the money that was required to have DES to investigate how to set up the program. So I don't believe anything has been done. I have not followed it since then. As far as the legal, um, it is still illegal and I can't discuss that publicly.
But we're at the end, we're near the end of our.
Basically.
Road on that. Which again, I don't want to say anything political, but it seems very strange in this day and age that, uh, we couldn't get some relief from environmental, um, crazy environmental bureaucracy that serves no purpose.
This isn't going to go away. And as you said, the first five years are basically setting up all the programs and the standards and then getting the results of the testing from the five years to ten years and then setting up any mechanical type systems that might be needed or other treatment areas in order to be able to.
Before the five years is up, they'll have other things.
It took them, what, fifteen years to get, so thirteen to seventeen, fourteen years to get the permits or could, this one could be year round for a while.
So other than creating reams of paperwork, what does this actually going to do for the environment for one point two million dollars in four years? I know that's a loaded question, but, um.
It will tell us where our problem areas are.
And what if we don't have any and we spent one point two million dollars?
Then we've proved that we haven't. One of the things I also had the interns working on was to find the areas that put us into the, find the areas within the rivers and brooks that were tested to put us on that impaired waters list. It only takes one to put us on the list, but it takes us years to get off.
So presumably what we get out of four or five years of this is we know where the sources are and we have got regulations and enforcement in place to try to clean up those illicit outfalls and things of that nature which are creating the problem. Um, so on the one hand, you can't argue that doing anything to clean up is a, is a bad thing. But the, the fact that this is kind of getting dumped on us at this point in time and then mandated and shoved down our throats is an unfunded mandate that it, it just is extremely difficult for us to suddenly swallow along with every other thing in town, pollution and otherwise, um, that we suddenly have to deal with. And the community is then asked to put the bill for it. We, we definitely appreciate the work that you're doing. Uh, we understand that it's going to take more manpower. Um, we can't just ask you to work a hundred and sixty hours a week instead of forty. Um, so it's, it's just stuff that we need to continue to be understanding while we understand that the things that you're doing are improving our community. Just like Ben Niles was talking about, having a better place to live. If we can reduce these floor drains, reduce the outfalls that are contaminating, that's, those are all good things. Um, it's just finding ways to pay for it, that's the problem.
All right, and I, I don't think we're in a bad place.
I suspect towns around us are in a lot worse shape than we are. I mean, as you alluded to, Manchester and Nashville have many more common
Right.
cross coupled drains and wastewater and sewer and stuff like that that they will, they will be dealing with a lot more than one point two million.
Yes, definitely. They have a lot of more larger bodies of water too that they have to deal with and a lot more, um, population.
Right.
So, yeah.
Eileen.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, thank you, Dawn. Um, would you kindly remind me how Concord dodged the bullet on this?
Good question.
And then the, the, um, the other portion of that is they obviously have a large third, I think, third largest city in the state. Uh, so they have to have an impact on the Merrimack River. As part of our problem that that river impact is something that now we have to prove that it's not ours necessarily, that in fact it's coming from up north.
No. The answer to that is no. We only have to prove what's coming out of our outfalls that we own. So if they are privately owned, we don't deal with it. If it's upstream, we don't deal with it. But we can impair any more than what comes in.
Okay.
I will tell you, my, I would suspect if you look at this first map where it's the southeast, this is the urbanized area from the Boston as they moved out. Concord is not within that area.
Concord is pretty urban.
I understand that, but it's not within the urbanized area as it has been defined by, by the EPA and the census.
And fair enough. And I, when I looked at the map and I see the thousand people per square mile calculation, you can see why, well, I'm surprised some of the towns within it are in it, quite frankly, but Lineboro, I don't get it. But, uh, but many communities in our state don't reach that point of a thousand per square mile, I'm sure. But Concord obviously does, um, and, um.
It's only one of the criteria within the urbanize. I didn't go through, there's a whole definition. I did not bring that.
That's okay. Really, because it's not going to change anything.
No. It's just.
No, it's going to raise everybody's.
It annoyed me, yes, so I'm sorry for wasting.
Yes, it annoys everybody because we all know that, we all see that.
Yeah.
Same thing with Keene.
Right. Yeah.
Peter?
Dawn, thanks for the presentation. This educated me greatly on this issue. I, you know, I knew I had somewhat of an educational, but this helped quite a bit. I hope people understand too. A couple of things during your presentation, public education part. If you guys, uh, you guys going to maybe use, uh, create a presentation for Merrimack Cable Television?
I hadn't thought of that at this point.
I, I think that's an underused resource for us. Um, for many things, uh, I think that's our cable television is an underused resource for a lot of things from all the different departments, including maybe this public education process. Uh, and also the pamphlets going out at all the polling stations when we have a voting day. Uh, those, that's another possibility. Um, Dawn, the other thing I think of is if we crafted a letter to the powers that be in Concord regarding the DES and so forth and everything discussed here, would that be helpful as a council and sent it out? Do you think that would be helpful or is it just wasting energy?
I believe it started the last time with Dave Wheeler. No, he was from Bedford.
But he was.
Andy Sanborn.
Andy Sanborn, okay.
That's right.
Um, so sending letters to the representatives, I would assume could start the ball rolling again.
And our senator and our governor. I mean, I would have no problem with, uh, a carefully worded letter being crafted and endorsing it as a, as to our concerns and to the costs.
And one of the meetings I did attend was with the governor in his.
I don't know where you want to go with this. Do we have to have a motion?
Actually, like there's been testimony. Bill was, did the testimony. Dawn, I think we've done, Kyle.
So it's, there's no interest in doing that within the council?
I think it's.
Not sure that there's an appropriate timing at the moment other than just to add to the noise clutter, but.
And that's the concern that I, that I would agree with, uh, the chairman on is that, you know, we've been, we've known about this issue since two thousand and twelve. We've, we've, we've seen this, we've seen this coming and, and, you know, Dawn and Kyle, I think quite honestly, have absolutely set amazing expectations to this council as to what this potentially was going to be. We're seeing it now. I mean, we've been kind of sitting back for the last five years waiting for this, for this train wreck to come into our community. It's here and now we're, we're really beginning to see, as Tom alluded to, my favorite, my, my two favorite words, unfunded mandate being imposed on this community and what we're being forced to, to, to deal with. And the, the, the real issue that Dawn hasn't really alluded to, but Kyle talked about it a long time ago when we were first trying to attack the problem and trying to keep the original permit that we had in place, which, am I correct in saying, Kyle, it was working? I mean, there was, there was, it was, it was a functional tool that we were working. We were meeting the rules and we were able to budget for it, but you know, it's, it's the level of phosphorus. So now we're going to be in, in, in the unsavory position of telling people that they can't use phosphorus in their lawn fertilizer. You know, let's, let's, none of the people down along Island Drive and, and some of the beautiful lawns down there have to tell these people that you're not going to be able to use the fertilizer that you want to use because of the impact of the runoff that it's having on, on Island Pond and, and the outfall heading into the Merrimack River. So there's a lot of, there has, at least from where I've sat, the way that I've looked at this, there's been a lot of smaller things as it relates to stormwater discharge that are gradually being built up to, that drive us to this particular point in time where we're looking at expending over a million dollars over the next three to five years trying to figure out whether or not we can clean what the, what the feds are asking, asking us to clean. Now the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn, um, we're no longer going to be, I think you said, and I apologize for the redundancy, up, upstream, Wilton, Milford, those in the South Yegan River watershed, we're not going to be responsible for, for dealing with their stormwater issues. It's only what, what, what's happening in the town of Merrimack that we're responsible for.
That's correct.
Okay, but up until that particular point, that was a large concern that we were going to be responsible for all the other towns downriver from us and, and being responsible for their cleanup. So.
I will, Wilton, I will use them as an example. They're the farthest out one that is the finger for this urbanized area. They convoluted the area to make it fit the one thousand. They're over by a hundred and ninety people.
Oh my God.
And I tried, because I was at Wilton at the time and I tried to get them the waiver that everybody else got for a hundred and ninety people and the EPA would not budge. And for a one square mile area within Wilton, they have been dragged into this program for the first time.
And how, and, and how many people are in, how many people live in Wilton?
We have thirty-six hundred and I'm a taxpayer there, so if you.
That's, you're, you're a resident, that's right.
I'm a resident and I not only have a residence, but I have an empty commercial building right now. So, I mean, I'm paying double in the taxes and this is, this is a big thing.
I mean, we complain, town of Wilton, I think, has, has, has a real, real complaint themselves because they are a really small town that's being forced to pay into a permit that quite honestly, and, and I don't mean to dumb it down, but the EPA has designed this permit for major metropolitan water districts, you know, urbanized water districts. We're talking about the Boston's, the New York's, the Chicago's of the world that quite honestly can afford this, to pay for, and to, they can afford to pay to be regulated on this particular permit as opposed to a community like, like Merrimack or Wilton or, or Stratham or Derry or, you know, any one of the forty-seven communities that, that are part of it, so.
So, uh, they, they don't have to face that because they have their own state, uh, taking care of that. So a Boston or those kinds of communities don't have to, don't have to deal with it except, um, and, because the state, their state can look at it and they can also, they can, um, use some common sense to tailor the program to what would actually be effective in their area. And that's why the state needs to take, take control of it.
If I remember correctly, Eileen, it was New Hampshire and Massachusetts that were the remaining two states that were still under EPA jurisdiction and then Massachusetts got, 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 I think, got dogged, now they're.
I don't know if they're totally out yet, but they were working towards that, so.
They were working towards, we, we aren't, we aren't actively working, but Massachusetts was engaged to get out.
Yes.
So, can, not to, can I just ask a couple of substantive questions related to, I don't mean to take the council's time, but have they lowered, has, has, has the EPA lowered the phosphorus number that we are required to quote unquote clean in the stormwaters? I remember the last time the number was in the seventies. I was wondering if that number had been lowered.
That is not my area of expertise. I can find out for you, but I do not have that answer for you.
Okay, that's, that's.
That's a Serrita question.
That's a Serrita question, okay. That's, that's fine. Um, as it relates to the training piece, is this the type of thing where we could engage the New Hampshire Municipal Association or the NRPC for some of the training that we're talking about? Or is that going to have to be done, done in-house for?
What we've been using, NRPC has been right along with us. We actually meet at the NRPC. So NRPCs have been involved along with DES. In fact, NRPC, Nashville was the one that started our coalition of bringing us together. Um, we still have meetings. I was there this afternoon again. In fact, we had more people there today. The room was filled. Um, people that hadn't been showing up regularly. Everybody was coming because we do have this due in two weeks. Um, so everybody was there today. Yeah, all of a sudden, yeah. Um, but no, I will say, for.
Yep, exactly.
For the most part, everybody's been working on some of the subgroups, you know, everybody's been doing some of their share and, few of them have been dropping by the wayside a little bit, but we'll, we're trying to wrangle them around. We've got another round for next year to come around, but, um, NRPC has been working with us. Um, DES has kind of taken over from their role. Um, but the other place we get a lot of our training from is UNH from the T Squared Program.
Okay.
And that is a road scholar program, so our highway guys go in there in particular. Um, the other place we can get training is, um, Primex, but it's not, it's not per se this, this type of training. But, um, the municipal association, I, they do have some classes. I'm not sure. I haven't attended those for a while.
Okay, and, and then the, the additional question I have is regarding, and again, you've, you were very clear about what the future was going to be as it relates to this program. As, as it related to, as it relates to the technician, the environmental GIS technician, is it fair to say that there's going to be enforcement capability, capacity or, is this individual going to be tasked with going out into the community and looking at some of the businesses? Like you talked about some of the floor basins, are they going to be tasked with identifying those particular businesses or, or, or companies, however you want to phrase it? Are they going to be tasked with trying to identify and bringing those particular companies into, for the lack of a better term, compliance?
They could be.
Could be.
Because we'll start at the outfalls and if we're finding a problem, we will work our way up through.
Okay.
So it will, there won't be any doubt by the time we get to that point. Um, but whether they have the capability of doing that or the enforcement is put on somebody else within town that has that capability, that all has to be shaped out. That's one of the things that needs to be worked out within the documents that I've prepared.
Okay.
Does that requires the regulations to be written and adopted and all that kind of stuff before you can even push that direction?
Right, well, within those documents, it's all set up in there. Who's going to do what? So the people that are, I've identified in there need to either work with it and say yes or we'll have to work something else out. Uh, it's, and that's where I'm at, is working those details out.
And, and the foreman, you have here twenty-eight hours a week. Do, do you think we'll be able to hire somebody to work twenty-eight hours a week or?
That would just be part of the stormwater. It would be a full-time position because they need more help, all, highway needs more help also.
So that, so.
Dual function.
Dual function. Dual function.
Dual function.
Okay, okay. And very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I thank the council for their, for their latitude tonight. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Peter, about writing a letter. I don't, I don't disagree because if, if DES is, and I could look at the, the PFOS problem that, that we've experienced here in Merrimack, they are very engaged on that particular issue, but I find it very hard to believe that they don't want to be engaged on this issue as well, because they kind of work hand in hand with each other. And Dawn's given testimony to us before in the past that, you know, there's, there is an indirect correlation to the discharge of PFOS going to our stormwater that we're going to have to be assuming responsibility for. And I would think, huge. So I would think it would behoove DES would want to be engaged in this particular issue, if, if anything, to make sure that there's continuity and uniformity as to how communities that not only have a stormwater problem, maybe they have a PFOS problem, at least they're, they're getting the correct guidance, these communities are getting the correct guidance from, from one authority as opposed to, well, I got to go to DES for this and now I got to go to the EPA for this and DES and EPA are not exactly talking to each other on this particular issue. So it creates to me a level, potentially a level of confusion that could exist for communities trying to, trying to do the right thing and, and being able to, to clean this sort of thing. So I don't disagree with you. I'm not sure whether or not this is the, the, the time to talk about it, but I certainly would have no problem putting it on the agenda for the next meeting. Because I, I, you know, I, I think this is something that DES needs to, to, to really get their, their arms around. I think the state should be taking ownership of this issue, not the EPA, because you've got 47 communities in this state that are getting, that are being burdened honorously by, by the federal government.
Right now, I don't believe that there are standards for the testing of stormwater for that. They've not, and it's not within, our permit does not say anything about.
But one's got to believe that that's coming down the pike. I mean, can't, can't walk around with the line, it's not.
But if, as long as, if our drains are, do not have it, then we're okay. We don't have to deal with San Gobain's direct drains. Those are not ours. We do not own them. And we are not responsible for those.
As long as it doesn't show up in our wastewater.
Right, which I don't.
Which it does today.
If, if I could add to that, where it will really come into play, currently, uh, DES has drinking water and groundwater standards. Uh, they've got new standards that are set to go in at the end of the month. Those don't affect our stormwater program because the stormwater program, the MS4 program, is our stormwater outfalls. It's the actual pipes that go into surface waters of the United States. Once DES does set a surface water standard, that's when it will impact the MS4 program. And if, if the drinking water standards and groundwater standards are any indication, it's going to hit every one of these MS4 communities very hard. Uh, so that's, that's where it comes into play. And I've used this analogy for you guys before. As you know, we're big proponents of DES taking over the program as well. The, the way the program is set up now, EPA writes the permit, DES sets the standards. And as someone quoted to me so, so greatly, EPA has the club that DES provides to beat us over the head. The, the club being the standards and DES using it in the, in the form of the permit. And they both look at each other, well, DES sets the standards, it's EPA's permit. You guys figure it out, so. That, that's the real struggle. And when surface water standards are set, it will impact the MS4 program.
Dramatically.
Potentially.
Potential.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
One last comment, I apologize. Regarding dog poop, you got a pet store in town, you got a couple of doggy daycares. That would be a good place to outreach as well. Pet's Choice is just down the street from us where Portofino's is and CBS. And you've got the Super Dogs up next to the Homestead. And I think there's one in the south end of town, but the name escapes me right now.
I know, I designed that one.
Sure you did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dawn.
Am I done?
Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Patience. Which brings us to a discussion on PFAS. Under all business, um, there's a commission on the environment and public health impacts of, of, yeah, PFOAs and Ss and all those things. Uh, the town council to consider appointing a representative from Merrimack to serve on the Commission on Environment and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals Established by House Bill 737. Wendy, Wendy mentioned this earlier. She and Representative Murphy and Representative Rung, along with Senator Chanley are on that committee. The, the bill calls for a representative from each of the three communities that are impacted most at the moment, Merrimack, Litchfield and Bedford, I think. And I know Bedford sent out a request looking for people interested, but we're, I think we're looking to possibly appoint somebody from the council or somebody that's, can, can be in close contact and communication with us to that position to work with all of our state reps that are in there already. And, uh, so that's something that we need to consider tonight.
Mr. Chairman, she's not here, but I am aware that she expressed an interest and I would like to nominate Council Healy to be our representative to that commission.
Okay. And I'd like to nominate Nancy if it's a nominating process we're doing. Okay. Peter?
I, I, you know, um, I'm thinking that both candidates would be great candidates and.
No argument.
The, uh, that's my opinion.
I said no argument.
Oh, oh, they said, no, I don't, sorry.
No, I said no argument. I agree with you. What, what, what part of no in front of argument was, was not clear, Counselor?
Don't mind me.
Okay.
But, uh, that being said, maybe we could do a, because I don't know what the time constraints will be for either individuals, so maybe a, a, a position and alternate.
Yeah, I don't, I was expressing a concern earlier. I don't know that there was an alternate position written into the law, so I'm not sure that we can officially do that.
But the way that I read the law, Mr. Chairman, it says points of representative, it doesn't specifically designate the type of representative that is coming from the community. So certainly, the way that I interpret it is that they just want to represent instead on the commission. And that if somebody's not able to represent the town on that commission on a given day, that somebody could represent this board in their stead for that given moment in time. That's how I would, would interpret it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, that's, that's certainly possible. I don't, I don't know. I guess I'm sure that someone along the line will tell us if it's not acceptable. It's a four-year commission. Excuse me, Wendy, do you have some ideas of, of the time commitment expectation? Are we talking about a monthly meeting or we don't know at all?
We haven't even met yet. But it's a four-year commission, so, so if you, if you put somebody who's in town council on the commission and then they don't get reelected or they don't run, you're going to have to put somebody else. So maybe you can do an alternate.
That's the same with the reps on the senators, too.
Correct, yeah.
You might want to repeat what Wendy had just said in a nutshell.
Yeah, Wendy was just pointing out that it's a four-year position on the, or the commission is a four-year term. Uh, and it may very well be necessary to replace individuals if they no longer are serving in the position that got them into that position in the first place. Whether we appoint a counselor, whether we have state reps, whatever, I mean, they're, they're put on there as being members of the legislature, but if they're, if they're not for some reason reelected, then obviously the commission will have some turnover over its four-year period. So I, I, I take it from that, that we can, we could certainly identify two people to be involved. Whether the commission will accept them alternatively or, or whatever is up to them to decide. We'd want to appoint somebody as primary, um, I think, and, and make that person the, the go-to that we would work with. Unless somebody disagrees with that. So there's been two nominations, one for Nancy and one for Barb. Does anybody have any comments they want to make on that?
I, I guess my only comment would be, um, I would support Nancy and, and the only reason I would support Nancy as well, I think she's obviously be a great ki, great candidate. I think Barbara would too, but I give, I defer to Nancy's seniority as a counselor here and in that, that's why, that would be my support. It's no, uh, uh, it's no, uh, nothing against Barbara on this issue.
Okay, anybody else? Lon?
Yeah, I support Nancy as a, as the nominee. Through the forty-some months that we've been aware of a particular contaminant or a particular group of contaminants, I've seen Nancy at various forums, um, in a leadership position on the council. During my sojourn over at MVD, Nancy participated in several of the very early discussions we, we had at that time. I've appreciated her acumen. I've appreciated her, um, for lack of a better term, forthrightness and politeness with people that have come before us. And she's my nominee. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I couldn't agree with you more, Lon, but I definitely do agree with you. Finley?
They're both good candidates, but I do concur with Lon's assessment and so on. But they would both do a good job. And both well-versed in it. But Nancy, having chaired the town council for, of your tenure, at least two hundred years of PFOS and also, that is why I well appreciate her sitting in the position.
It's not often you get two nurses sitting here on the town council that can speak intelligently about medical issues that are, that are potentially impacted by the toxin. So I, again, I, like I've, like I've said, I have no problem with, I have no problem with, with both of them because one has tenure, the other doesn't, but I look at the clinical backgrounds. Their, in the, in the rich history as a, as a result of being nurses in their chosen profession is being really invaluable with this commission. So. It's nothing personal, Nancy. I, Barbara asked to serve and I said I would nominate her, so I have, I just.
I don't take anything out of that.
I don't want you to be offended by it.
And you're absolutely right. Barbara's as qualified as I am. I, she's knowledgeable, she's kept up with.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And again, I, just to make a, I didn't seek this, just to let everybody know.
We're sure you didn't.
But I would be willing to do it if that's with the council. And I think regardless of what the criteria is, I would certainly keep it in mind that Barbara would be you know, a resource and, and would work with, you know.
Absolutely, Nancy.
Okay. Do we want to just do a roll call vote on?
Roll call.
Uh, all those in favor of Nancy? Finley? Or do you want to go through and just say who you're in favor of? Finley?
My vote is for Nancy.
Okay. Peter?
Nancy.
Yeah? Barbara?
Mm-hmm.
I vote for Nancy.
Can I recuse?
You can. Lon? Nancy. So with one recruit, so one none here and adding it up, Nancy gets four votes, so Barbara's one.
Mr. Chairman, I ask for reconsideration to make the nomination unanimous for Nancy Harrington.
Without objection, we'll do that. So Nancy, thank you very much. You're now our appointed drafted member.
So you'll notify, and I'll just wait to hear, right?
Well, yeah. Do you, do you send the name in or does Diane need to do that or?
I'm not sure, but I will find out and I will take care of it.
Diane was contacted, but if you can work with her.
I will find out and I will take care of it. And I just.
The clerk, the boarding clerk of the house has been notified.
And I just, as Nancy knows, um, we have a very valuable employee and resource here in Sarita Croce, who is more than willing to, um, work with Nancy and/or Barbara to, um, help them through some of the, you know, data analysis, chemistry, you know, reading 6,000-page reports, I'm not making that up, and that kind of thing, and pulling out the, the relevant stuff. So it's not, um.
Yeah, and, and Sarita's extremely busy these days with her own problems over at wastewater, so.
Yes.
We're, we'll use her as we can, but realize that she's got a full-time job that she's working on.
And, uh, and design, in the process of designing a $22 million renovation to her.
Right.
Wastewater treatment system.
But she is invaluable as a resource.
Absolutely. And she asked me to, to pass along to whoever that person was on the council that she would be very happy to assist with that. She's a very good teacher also, even to somebody like myself that doesn't know a molecule from an atom.
Moving along, the next, the next item under the PFAS agenda, there was three of them, is communication with the state. The town council to request that all correspondence on DES matters impacting the town of Merrimack include a carbon copy to the town manager. And Bill had brought this up. Bill, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, very quickly, there was, um, a soil sampling permit that received, uh, a soil sampling work plan that San Gobain has. They applied for a deferment that was approved by Department of Environmental Services. And the deferment for the soil sampling plan was put off until, till March of next year. We were carbon copied on the decision by DES to grant the approval of that deferment. The town never received any notice from either DES or San Gobain that this particular request for a deferment was, was being sought. So the letter that I put together, which Tom was kind enough to go through and make a couple of quote-unquote subtle changes to, addresses the fact that the, the town of Merrimack was not notified of San Gobain's and, uh, San Gobain's request to defer the soil sampling work plan. And that moving forward, while we are already being carbon copied on all responses emanating from the Department of Environmental Services, that the town of Merrimack be notified of any and all environmental impacts, whether it be residential, commercial properties here in town of Merrimack, that the town manager be made away, be made away, be made aware of said, of said request. And it could be, you know, it could be as minute as a, as an alteration of terrain, which may not seem much, but you know, soil sampling where we've been, um, dealing with PFOS in this community now for coming up on seven years, where there's development being proposed along that particular corridor, I really think it behooves the town to be engaged on, on things being sought, uh, being sought at, at the state so that we can be able to make informed decision, be able to engage our team like Sarita, like Kyle, like Dawn, you know, whomever, to be able to look at what's being requested and to see whether or not the town needs to interject itself. Because I feel in this particular situation, uh, potentially the, the town council could have.
Had an opinion.
Could have had an opinion on the process. Thank you, Nancy. And not being allowed to express that particular opinion, you know, it, it, it falls short. I mean, I should not have to find out about these certain things by going to one stop on the DES website. I should not have to find out about this on Instagram or Twitter or, or Facebook. I shouldn't, shouldn't be finding out about these particular things. I would think that DES, and they've worked, and like I said, like I said. I would think that DES, and they've worked, and like I said, like I said in my letter, you know, they've collaborated with us, so I don't want you to, I don't want people to think that they're not collaborating with us. But this is, you know, this presents a unique opportunity to add a level of transparency to this process regarding environmental concerns, that's going to allow for us to foster a stronger sense of collaboration with DES and other companies in the community that may be reaching out to DES with environmental concerns of their own. So, Tom's letter has the changes. I did not know if other people wanted to add changes to the particular letter. Like I said, I wrote it, Tom made some changes, if people want to add anything else to it, you know, friendly amendments are.
Or not.
Or not. Friendly amendments are.
Friendly ones are friendly ones. Peter, you wanted to say something?
I just want to say, hey, we're stakeholders, we should be kept in the loop. It's as simple as that.
I agree.
And I support this letter, it looks good to me.
Okay. Finley?
The only changes I had were Tom's changes, and so otherwise, I totally support the letter. Assuming those were your changes, I didn't see anything else. Was the here and afters?
That was basically it. I changed a few words in some of the sentences to try and make it a little bit easier to, one of the words, one of the sentences I felt was a little too long to run on, and I tried to adjust it a little bit. So it still reads the same, I think it still says the same thing.
Yeah.
So, and just ownership, I think, one of the things, but.
Nancy.
Good.
First of all, thank you, Bill. I think as.
I think Bill did a great job.
Did a great job. I do concur with the suggestion, and I think you're right. We need to set an expectation that we need to be notified, so this, I think, does that. So thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Thank you, Nancy.
Anybody else? So are we in agreement to send this letter to DES?
Is a motion appropriate, Mr. Chairman?
I would think so, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised letter, is that how it should?
The Canick letter.
The Canick.
The Canick letter.
No, Thomas.
Yes, it does.
Letter.
Second.
I made by Nancy, and seconded by Lon to send the letter as modified.
As modified.
And I want to point out that my job was made a lot easier, looking at something and making a change to it than trying to write it.
That's right.
And I appreciate Bill's efforts at putting this together in the first place, because starting with a blank sheet of paper is one of my nightmares. But having something written down, you can always make a change to it, and that makes my life easier. So I did a very tiny piece of Yeoman's work that Bill did on this, and thank you very much for that. Motion's on the table to send this letter to DES. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. So we'll make a clean copy, and Eileen and I will sign it, if that seems appropriate to the council. That's the way Bill put it originally, but.
And just, I put it that way so that DES would understand that, you know, we rely on Eileen and the town, and that the council, you know.
The council supports it with Eileen there.
The council supports it with Eileen there, absolutely.
That's our point. Queen of the dead.
Yep.
So we'll work on that. And then the third item was this public meeting with the Department of Environmental Services. It's tentatively, or it is scheduled?
Has been scheduled.
It is scheduled for Tuesday, November 5th, in the All Purpose Room at the Upper Elementary School. I saw a note just recently from Wendy that came through our email that said that she approves of it, and will help us to get the word out, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen, for the work she did to put it together.
Yep, thank you, Wendy.
And it's at 5:30.
Pardon?
You didn't give a time.
Oh, it's at 5:30.
5:30, yes.
On that date, yes.
November 5th, right?
Yes.
So November 5th, 5:30, Masticola Upper Elementary School, All Purpose Room.
Yes.
DES, will anybody else be here, or just DES?
No, and so, I just, anybody can do whatever they want. The impression that I got from the people that got up to speak was that, and again, that's just me, that people wanted to know, now that DES has lowered the levels, what does that mean to me? What does that mean for me and my health? And so I asked Clark for that type of a meeting, and he said, I can't, he said, MVD's responsible for the public water, and this does not apply to private wells. And I said, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about you lowering the standard, and people want to know how it affects them, regardless of what kind of water they drink. And he said, there's no way that he could do that. So now, yes, DHHS.
So what's that meaning, Bill?
Right.
Well, that's the question, I guess.
Well, I'll tell you what it is. What it is, is what they want to present, not what we want to hear, but what they want to present, in my, again, in my opinion. So what he's going to present, DES will not, DHHS will not be here, they will not talk about MCLs or health at all. What they will talk about is, they're going to have a public hearing on the St. Gobain air permit, and they are going to have an update briefing on the overall investigation and mitigation efforts. Period.
So that does seem to be a little far off from where I thought people were asking for.
And that's what I told him?
Yep.
And he is not doing it.
So that's our answer.
Your answer is, that's what you're going to hear?
Well.
If you'd like me to push back?
But I presume he's going to allow those questions.
No, 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 it's presentation.
Presentation only.
Yep, so if you want me to push back, you know I can.
I want you to push back, but what I have to agree with, that I saw from Wendy briefly in her email, is that to get into all the details of their PowerPoint and stuff like that, it's just going to get way too deep in the weeds. What we really want them to do is say, what's the impact to an individual? Go ahead.
So that's what I started out with, was not the science. I didn't care about the science. I didn't think that that was really particularly relevant. But what he said is that they can't, that people would not be, let me read it. People, let's see. So if you just bear with me a little bit on this, I appreciate it. So I wrote, as you can see below, the town council would like to have a public information meeting to explain to the public what the new MCLs mean to them. It would probably be a good idea to have representatives from DHHS there to explain why the numbers are so low, and how it relates to current and future health concerns. Is that something you're able to do? He said, MCLs don't go in effect until September. Assuming St. Gobain agrees to take expanded responsibility, we will have direction on something. If you are looking for a briefing on the entire St. Gobain investigation response, we should engage other impacted towns. So he didn't answer me. So I wrote, the way that the request was made at the meeting was presented to the council relates specifically to the lower MCLs, and how they relate to all drinking water sources, not just, not private wells or public wells. I realize the new MCLs do not relate to private wells, and/or what MVD intends to do to bring their public wells into compliance. Your study indicates that MCLs below a certain number are dangerous, in parentheses, my word, to people's health, and people want to know how it applies to them regardless of their drinking water source. So for instance, if I have a private well that tests at 15 PPT for PFOA, what do I need to do to protect my family, in parentheses, filtration systems, et cetera, and who pays for them? He writes back, as for health impacts, the MCLs were chosen to be fully protective against all known health risks for all populations. There is no table that says drinking water at X percent over the standard of your risk of Y, conditions increase by Z percent, or anything close to it. As for who's paying for the home treatment, we don't know. So he, so I just, I just kept pushing that this is the meeting that we want, and he said that the public will not be satisfied with what he's able to tell them. So when he said that, I said, well, maybe you don't have a formula, but maybe you could at least give us the science, so that people can discern for themselves what their own public health risk was. And he said he wasn't doing that either. So I wasn't looking for the science originally, I just wanted to have regular people to understand the implications of PFOS with these new numbers. And he's not going to do it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Eileen, maybe Dr. Chan?
Yeah, Dr. Chan.
Dr. Chan would be the appropriate person to represent that type of information, as far as the health, and why we should lower it, and so forth. And I guess you probably have the answer to that.
I have asked, and he has said no.
Dr. Chan, or?
No, I asked Clark.
Well, Dr. Chan's the separate Director of Health and Human Services, he can determine if he wants to do it.
He's a member of DHHS.
He's the state epidemiologist.
Yeah, so he can make that decision if he wants to come down and talk, right? Clark's not the one that would, can tell him.
Well, he seems to be running the whole show on this, so. As you can see, I'm a bit frustrated, because we're trying to put together a meeting for a particular purpose, and, you know, from my understanding, there are people that are concerned about their health risks, and what these new numbers mean for them. And that's the only reason we really need to have a meeting, the only, by far the most important part, and he is not going to do it.
So call Dr. Chan and invite Dr. Chan.
Is it, should we be reaching out to DHHS directly?
Yeah, we should be.
And challenging them to come tell us?
I sure can, but I can guarantee you that Clark is running the show on who's going to come.
Because this is a DES meeting.
Well, I think we make the offer, and I guess then, if we, if we.
You're right, Tom, we can.
If we don't get any, if they don't want to address these issues, then my question is, why are we having this meeting?
That's right.
Yep.
I'm totally with you.
So I agree with Peter, I think that contact should be made, and the invitation extended. And if it works, and they would do that, I think you're right, that's what people want to know.
And maybe it could be not under the auspices of DES, but as you said, on its own entity, Department of Health and Human Services, not sponsored by DES.
Chapter 1, chapter 2.
Yeah. I mean, he chose the numbers, and if he can't sit there and give me the, you know, the reasons, the impacts that it's going to have, potential impacts it might have, then it.
And Clark swears to him, so.
They should be able to answer. If they have data that made them make a determination, then what are the implications of the data that they received?
Toxicologist is insane.
It's probably not so much the epidemiologist as the person that they, the new, relatively new toxicologist that they hired. I think he was the one, or she was the one that put together, you know, the data that came, where the numbers came from, or was the driving force.
And I'm speculating, but maybe Clark doesn't want to put the toxicologist into the line of fire, considering that they're relatively new to the state, relatively new to the job.
That's part of the job, if you're going to.
I don't disagree with you.
If you're going to ring the alarm bell, you can't say to people.
Eileen, I.
That's right.
You're preaching to the choir, I agree with you.
I guess I'd be curious to know, what database they use to go off of, and I can imagine, it's probably from some national resource or study, and if that's the case, we can identify, is there a representative from that source of information to attend the meeting?
We shouldn't have to do that, though, that's the point.
And our numbers are lower than Minnesota on the, you know, using their model. So it's really up to our state to be able to answer to the public as to what they need to know. And it could be as simple as, here's a list of reputable filtration companies or products, because, you know, you're going to be inundated by all kinds of water filtration systems that claim to clean up everything that, you know.
So I guess the simple answer, not to drag this out, is if they're not going to attend and address the issue, then maybe we should cancel this meeting. And we have to await their answer on that. That's what I'm.
So let's push it some more, and see if we can't get a little bit clearer thought on, because I think you've heard that we really want to hear about the impacts, and how we address them, not necessarily how they got to the numbers, but how come that number is so egregious, and what can we do about it, whether we're on private or public water? We can't just say, well, some public utility has to deal with it. We have to deal with it, this is our problem.
People's health.
People's health, that they're now claiming it's.
You went from 70 parts portraying down to 14, and there's a reason.
Or 12, or.
Or 12, whatever that number is, there is a reason.
Yeah, and he points to a PowerPoint that's about 30 or 40 pages long, that describes all of that stuff in gory detail, that I couldn't understand, and I briefly glanced through it.
I looked at it too, Tom, I agree with you.
But you can highlight and summarize the major issues.
You would think that they could, the people that put it together could bring out the important pieces apart, so that's what we're asking them to do, to help us to understand. And he complains that there's a voluminous report that was given to the legislature when the MCLs were accepted, and that we should all go look at that, but I can imagine, I mean, even Sarita would have trouble understanding that, I think, and certainly I do, so.
The legislators obviously can.
Right, they obviously could, because they thought it was a great thing, and bought up on it, without figuring out how we're going to fund it. So I guess, Eileen, we're going to ask you to go back to the table again, and we'll bring this up again. Lon?
Yeah, perhaps we shouldn't leave the viewing public and ourselves confused. We're still planning on a 5:30 meeting on Tuesday, November 5th.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're just still working on the final agenda.
Well, at one point, we were going to say, cancel it.
And.
And we may, but at this point, while we have the date, let's keep it, and let's move Where does that put us?
Minutes.
Minutes. Anybody have any other thoughts or suggestions on changes? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote on the minutes from the goal-setting session as presented.
I'm Barbara.
What?
Sorry, I didn't.
The ones that are in our packet here.
Okay, and those are Barbara's?
Probably, the corrected ones, yes.
Thank you.
Have you not read the packet?
I have to admit.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. We have minutes from August 15th.
So moved.
Moved by Peter, seconded by Nancy. Any corrections, changes, additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, page one, line four. Vice Chairman Boyd, parentheses, participated electronically, close parentheses.
Yeah.
I actually participated telephonically, not electronically.
Actually, it's, what?
It's, it's what?
Voip.
Voip?
He was voiped.
I was voiped.
Did you have to plug it in?
By the way, let the record shine, I appreciate it.
Moving along, Mr. Chairman, page seven, line one, again, it's not electronically but telephonically.
Is, is that important to you?
If I was participating electronically, it may suggest that I'm actually part of the Borg.
Part of the what?
I'm being, trying to be funny, failing miserably. I won't quit the day job, folks. It's, it's not, it, it's not your main, if you don't want to change it.
Telephonically, meaning you were on the phone?
On the phone, as opposed to electronically, which is.
Is on the phone. Phones are electronic, right? I mean.
I.
Is, is.
Okay.
Tomato and tomato, what would you like?
Teleconference.
Voip.
Move, move.
Move to change the word electronically to telephonically?
Move the question, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I wanted to bring up the viva voice thing, or whatever you call that, viva voce?
Yeah.
I think we talked about this last time.
Yes, we did.
It seems to me that that's not making the minutes presentable to the common person who can read them because most common people don't know what viva voce means.
Viva voce is Latin for by voice.
So if we said it was a voice roll call instead of a viva voice?
Or you could just, you could say a roll call was conducted. You can take out viva voce altogether, which is what we've done previously.
Okay.
And just left it as roll call, so.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
All of the motions, so one of them was on page nine and any of the ensuing ones that say viva voce, you could just leave out the viva voce and just say a roll call was taken, was conducted.
Did the person who transcribed this know what that was?
Yeah, she's done it before.
Wow.
Yeah. But it's, but.
If I may, I think it's fine the way it is because, I don't know, you have delineated as viva voce, but you also have yays and nays recorded.
Right, we have to because that's the law that we have to record it. So the viva voce, just, just, it's not plain English and that's what bothers me about our minutes.
I think it, I think it gives us an international flair.
Which means we're going to give the international house of pancakes a run for the money?
At this time of night, let's really get into that one big time.
You want it, guys?
I want to vote, I have one, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We still waiting for review?
Yes.
Is Bill done?
Bill, are you done?
Yes, I am done.
Okay. On page nine of 17, line 38, line 39, I think the chief was speaking, she's working with the IMCA to provide a forum, I think she meant forum or said forum, instead of forum for family members.
Forum. 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 Gotcha.
If we check the tape or whatever to make that correction.
I think you are correct.
I think you're correct, Lon.
That's all.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good one.
As compared to.
Body.
Did you get that, Paul?
So are we, are we getting rid of viva voce?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm disappointed.
That's the motion on the table.
We don't want to be European.
You could, you could vote against the motion if you want. Okay. All those in favor of the motions as modified with viva voce, we're taking out forum, replaced for form and whatever other revisions were given, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Zay.
Peter's opposed? That passes 5-1-0 with Peter Albert in opposition.
Being the Latin linguist that he is.
First in about 40 years of sitting around minutes being bad, like seeing someone vote no.
No, a minute. On principle, I.
Comments from the press, none here. Comments from the public, none here. Comments from the council. Peter.
Okay, a couple of things, I'll try and make them quick. First of all, I, I know we talked about it in our, our retreat sidewalks. I see that the project, the condominium project on East Chamberlain, they've paved the sidewalk down. Tim Thompson has advised me that they're going to also do a section in front of their land with the sidewalk. Now, I don't want to be misconstrued, I don't think we need sidewalks everywhere as I've heard before, but we did talk about creating sidewalks on the westerly side and finishing the job. Well, is it the time now to use the unfunded balance or some of it to do that section, maybe at least tie the rest of it in while the ground's broken, they're going to do the work, down to the gas station? You know, there's two residences there, I think, there are two or three houses there that it's in front of. But to me, it's almost like this is our goal, we've talked about it, is it the time to strike now and do it while they're doing it, doing that project as well?
It's on the same side of the road?
Yeah, it's on the same side, western side of the road. I mean, you've got the sidewalks in front of DW Diner that ends there. I mean, and I know we talked about we can't do it all at once, but piecemeal, we're trying to do that. Is this the time to do this section, add this on? You know, so that, that was, that was really the issue I wanted to talk about and actually I'll just leave it at that.
Are you suggesting that we would then contact whatever contractor is building that sidewalk and see if we could pay them to go the extra?
Yeah, if they're, if they're within a reasonable price, yes. I mean, you know.
As, as opposed to trying to get PW to drop whatever they're doing and go running and put in sidewalk or something?
Yeah.
It's definitely worth checking out.
It's a piece of the puzzle or a piece of the project we can get done.
You definitely can. If that's what you wish, that collectively.
Yeah, I think, I, I'm not seeing anybody disagreeing that we should go ahead and try to accomplish that if we can get a reasonable, because they'll be, they'll be activated in there and all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
You'd have a lot of room to do that.
You'll be Nelson's pinky.
Thank you.
Okay, further comments from the council?
Just two things. One, the Wood Springs conversation, I do appreciate that they came down. I think they took it quite seriously and I'm happy that that is potentially happening. It is happening, whether or not it comes to a conclusion, we'll know. But, and the other thing is, this was a little bit ago, but I, when that child was missing from Kids Cove. Kids Cove, thank you. It's been years since my, I've been down there with babies, but I'll be back. But the Jen Fadowsky, a citizen in town, a long time, found the child and she didn't realize that the police department, through their social media and everything, had asked that people wait. She didn't realize that, but her instinct said, I've got to go to the river and sure enough she found the child walking, I believe, near the railroad tracks.
On the railroad tracks, yeah.
So I wanted to make sure that I took the time to thank her for that because that had to be a very scary thing for the family and, and as a, as a parent and now grandparent, the whole thing scared me. So I appreciate that she had that intuition somehow to head that way and, and kept that child from any further potential danger. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And that was scary. I mean, I, it's every parent's nightmare or something like that. I can't imagine being in that situation.
And I believe the child, believe the child was non-verbal as well, which I think is even much more horrible for a parent to deal with, knowing that their child can't even speak. And I'm sure Council of Woods can speak to personal experiences with that, so.
That's kind of, I'm sure.
And 10 minutes, a half an hour, 45 minutes, and we're all holding our breath. So it was a great outcome.
Any other comments from council at this point?
Mr. Chairman, very, very quickly, as everybody knows I like to run, the two road races coming up to benefit, one to benefit cancer, the other one to benefit the Laverme Foundation, September 30th at the high school is Erica's run and the Laverme 5K is going to be on October 6th. For more information, just Google it and you'll find all the details that you need. Both are great causes that do important work to benefit the citizens here in Merrimack. Thank you.
And just to put a point on something, you're not benefiting cancer, you're benefiting cancer research.
Cancer research, sorry. Thank you.
My wife beats me up on that kind of stuff, you know, when they have.
You just want to pass it on.
Pass on the pain.
Viva Vitri.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
So moved.
Let's vote no.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Viva voce.
Any abstaining? None? Okay, that passes, we adjourn. Thank you. Please turn your mics off.